Vice Mayor Bravo.
Here.
Councilwoman Santini.
Here.
Councilwoman Fadhead.
Here.
Councilwoman Daskis.
Here.
There is a forum present. Thank you. If you're able, please rise and join us in the implication by Councilman Walter Fadhead.
This evening, we pray for the agenda set forth before us and ask that we be granted the ability to work together in harmony where there is endless disagreement and dissent. We ask for the strength to speak up when given the opportunity to speak and the patience to listen receptively and empathfully when it's time to listen. We ask for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues that we encounter and a keen sense of the welfare and needs of our residents. May we be reminded that we're not only leaders but also servants and that it's our responsibility to serve the common good of all the residents of Miami Springs. Amen.
Amen.
May we please join us in the closing of the meetings? As my family is in the United States of America, and it's been a while since I've been on the call. Beated. Hello, it's so wonderful to see so many happy faces, smiling faces looking back at us today. Sometimes the meetings aren't this full. So, welcome everyone and those, anyone that's attending online to our December 11th regular city council meeting. We'll get started with the awards and presentations and Chief Guzman.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I think you've all. Most of you have heard me say that one of my favorite things of my job is promoting good people to good positions. And I have the opportunity tonight, Albert Sandler, come on, don't be shy. Albert is like, go ahead, Stan. Anyway, he's a graduate, graduate of Miami Springs Senior High. He received his paters in criminal justice from Florida National University. He began his service with the Miami Springs Police Department as a public service agent in August of 2001. Then going on to the police academy where he graduated in November 2002.
He's here, that's okay.
Served as patrol officer, officer in charge, was like acting supervisor. Other officers were keen on him, working with two, two dogs. He was promoted to sergeant in September of 2012. And he's here, obviously, with his daughter Nicole, who's not too happy. Michelle and several members of the family. So, without further ado, Lieutenant Albert Sandler.
I prepared a speech because I got a pen to the baby out there, but I want to thank everybody. Chief, obviously, it's a bittersweet situation because he actually promoted me his first year on and on his way out. Thank you, Chief. Also, J.C., I know you had some, see, some inner workings in there as well. Thank you so much for that as well. And of course, my family, my wife, my daughter, everyone can hear from outside. Everybody here, all my coworkers that are here to support me. So, thank you so much.
Good ten. Let's go ahead since the council's here, so we kind of go back and forth. Who's the yard of the month award and? The yard of the month award, this is our Miami Springs Parks and Parks Board. Parks and something for it, never move the other name. Park, no, not recreation, parks and markets. Okay, they, on the basis, they go around Miami Springs and they look at all the beautiful yards of Miami Springs and they select the yard of the month. So, this month, we're very honored to give the award to Stephen Hernandez. Is he here, Steve? No, okay, well, we will have to send to you, but congratulations and thank you for beautifying your yard. And I want to encourage the residents to go by 474 Falcon Avenue, drop by and see the yard of the month for December, the Miami Springs yard of the month. In addition to that, we're going to go ahead and do our City Hall lobby artist of the month presentation. And I know he's here tonight. Anyone that came in, got to see the beautiful artwork, we're very appreciative of the constant displays of the rotating displays of art to beautify our city hall. So, would the artists, please come up and your family? Fernando, did I meet you? Is that who you said? It's our artist of the month. If you're not here at City Hall tonight or you're listening, please stop by and visit the display. It's really amazing. Thank you very much for beautifying and bringing your art to the display in Miami Springs. Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Fadhead. We're organizing, so we're gonna have to go back and forth so much. Okay, so I wanted to, if the council is okay with it, we are going to, after our presentations, at the end of our presentation, I'm going to move item. 12A, which is a request by the girl's country, so you don't have to stay so late. We'll move it to the end of the presentations, okay? Now, we don't have to stay until the meeting. Okay, so our next presentation is Dr. Ned Murray. He's the Associate Director of the George M. Perez Metropolitan Center at FIU Economic. And he's going to provide, at FIU, and he's going to provide an economic development overview. I asked Dr. Murray to make this presentation for us. It is, he has some work for, I believe, Coral Gables recently and Doral and other cities. You have a metropolitan center, it's a great resource here in Miami-Dade County, part of FIU. And they help cities. Look at opportunities for economic development. And I know that that's something that's been very forefront in our minds. So, without further ado, Dr. Murray, I want to thank you for being here.
Well, well, thank you, Major Mitchell and fellow councilors. It's a pleasure to be here. Always enjoyed coming to Miami Springs in the past and I was glad to be here tonight to talk a little bit about economic development. As the mayor just mentioned, the FIU Metropolitan Center is engaged currently in a number of municipalities in Miami-Dade and South Florida. We're on the Gulf Coast as well, doing economic development strategic plan. So, what I'm going to do is make it a little easier is to kind of use a couple of these cities that we're working in as examples. It's just of what we're talking about, we're talking, we're talking about economic development planning. I will say this, and I think it's really important stated, is that the Metropolitan Center has been around for, oh my God, 1997, I think is when we started downtown Miami. But we've really seen since the exit of the Great Recession, starting about 2013, 14. A number of municipalities and particularly in South, here in South Florida, that have asked us to, and or just kind of out themselves, doing economic development plans. Because they don't want to get, they don't want what happens with the Great Recession in terms of loss of jobs, loss of businesses to happen. And then, of course, we had COVID more recently, the pandemic, of course, created such rapid job loss and business loss as well. So, more and more, what we're seeing is municipalities want to become economically resilient. If they, if you can control, to whatever extent you can, your local economy, you want to do that. And so, that's what we've been hearing. Now, as far as municipalities go, every municipality is different in, in many, many respects. Some want to grow, some want to brand themselves, some want to obviously be very competitive with their, with their joining municipalities. While others may be in the state or nationally even, like Coral Gables. So, there's probably a different need or different aspiration relative to why a municipality undertakes an economic development plan. Performs it with, working with various stakeholders and, and in our case, the Metropolitan Center. But, but it does come down to several real bases and these are things I think you're probably most concerned about. I, when we talk about economic resilience, the first thing you think about is your economic base, right? We all know how hurt we were from both the Great Recession and the pandemic in terms of our economic base. We always want to be thinking about that, not only in terms of our revenues, that's so essential, but also in terms of the opportunities that it creates for our residents who live here. And I'll show you some numbers shortly because that, that's, that always comes up. Especially in a South border where we have so many people meeting each day, that we can get people off the roads and provide opportunities for our residents to live here, to be able to work here as much as possible. That's always a big, big issue. And then the last one, as I said, once again, is that resiliency. I, I think prior to, to the Great Recession and the pandemic, I think a lot of communities felt, well, what is it that we can really do? I mean, if he's a national issue of regional, or regional scope, what is it that we can do? Well, more and more, as I was saying, I think there's a lot more we can do. Maybe we can't control certain things at the national level, state level, but if there's, there are things that we can do locally, we'd like to be able to do that. And I think, again, that goes back to your economic base and to the opportunities for jobs that we're providing. So, the process itself is two-pronged. The first is what we call a competitive assessment, very data-driven. This is really, really helpful for every municipality that we've worked with because it really brings you up to speed, up to date on, on population trends, number one. Who we are right now, who's living here, who's moving, who's leaving. Obviously, what industries are here, what's going on in your various real estate markets, not only the residential, but on this retail and commercial, industrial, if you have it. And then, you know, looking at your various trends and the various challenges that you have. You know, it's important in a, in a, for a community like Miami Springs to be really cognizant of what's happening around. And we find this in many, many other municipalities, but not just here, but in, in other places. In fact, I'll give you a good example. The village of Wellington, which I think many of you know, very, very. Attractive community that, that's had a strong economy over the years. They, they always felt that they could pretty much be on their own out there in the, in Western Palm Beach. But as, as things change over the years, development grew all around them. And what they found was their economy had aged. Their, their real estate had aged, including old walls that they had within the confines of the, of the, of the village. So, they knew they had something and they also wanted to make sure that they provide opportunities. It was always meant to be a, a family-oriented village, that was the intent, in many ways similar to Miami Springs in terms of families. But they wanted to make sure they could pull on and, and also get caught up because the community was created 40, 40 years ago. So, so that, that's kind of an example. So, you need to know what's happening around you. Obviously, there's a lot happening around Miami Springs, with Doral nearby and just the economy itself of Miami-Dade, there's a lot going on. So, it's good to know where you fit in. You don't have to copy it in any way, but you want to know where you fit in and if there's opportunities, let, let's, let's think about it, let's just talk about that. So, then that, that's the plan itself, you know, how can we better position the city essentially to, to grow at your pace in a way that you want to grow? Obviously, you don't have a lot of commercial land, industrial land, in fact, I don't do any industrial land. But you do have, you do have a major corridor, Northwest 36th Street. And you have a little downtown, it's beautiful, and you have some business commercial areas. So, you know, these are all things you could look at in terms of, not so much from an economic growth perspective, but what, what do you need? What would you like to do and what, what are the opportunities along these areas for job creation, business creation? And, and opportunities, like you said, for your, for your residents, not only to be able to work here, but, but when people come into your community, nice to know that there's restaurants, a hotel. And within the confines of, of your incorporation that, that they would be able to take advantage of, but you could do as well. So, what are the key elements of the competitive assessment? I already mentioned the population trend, really important in all the communities that we've worked with over the years is to really get strong community stakeholder engagement. Lots, lots of communities already have economic development, ID boards in place that you work with. So, but you have your visitors, obviously, and those, and the other community leaders that you want at the table early on, engage them. You want to look at your different industry sectors that you have here and within the community, but also surrounding you. Because obviously, I came in on 27, there's a lot going on out there in Okeechobee. So, you, you need to be mindful of what's happening around you, but like I said, land use and zoning. Obviously, important from a, from a development perspective. Is, is it working for you, changes that need to be made? I see that you have a Northwest 36th District in your zoning code, that's good, that's really good. Real estate trends, of course, a lot going on with that over the last couple of years in particular, as you all know. Quality of life factors and conditions. One of the things we don't talk a lot about, we talk about economic development, but that, what a great way of reassuring your community that you want to maintain, particularly a community like Miami Springs, where your quality of life, your community character is just so, so obvious that you want to be able to think about, well, how can we maintain that, right? Or how can we enhance that in certain ways? Then there's the housing market issues, and of course, benchmarking we use on, in most communities. Some communities want to benchmark themselves against other communities nearby. Others want to go more national. Some communities just want to see how they compare on, against, you know, others, certain communities that they'd like to be more competitive with. It's a good exercise, and I'm going to share that with you in a second. Here's, here's, here's the one we did for Coral Gables, is one of the tables we did. In terms of benchmarking, all those communities you see there, both here in Florida and the ones down below across the country, they selected those. They said, we want, these would be the benchmark municipalities, not only here in Miami and South Florida, but, but beyond, that we'd like to just see how they're doing compared to us. Obviously, there were a number of indicators, I'm just showing you a few here, in terms of, you know, the parent population, median income, labor force participation, really important indicator. And then that last column, which most communities are really trying to become more competitive in, is how are we dealing with our young professionals? Are we keeping them, attracting them, or are we losing them? And this, you can see in that case, not doing really well compared to many others, but, but that's, that's a big, big issue. Then, you, it works. You want to know where they're working, how far they're going each day. We call this an employment inflow, outflow analysis. This, once again, I'm using Coral Gables as an example, but we do this for all the communities we work in. What you can see here, and it's a map that goes with this, that's really quite striking. And I will say that this is very common among, I would say, the majority, vast majority of municipalities in Miami-Dade, in South Florida, is that we have, far too many of our workers who live here going elsewhere for their jobs each day. They only need to go out on the road each day during few hours and know that, right? That people traveling. In this case, you can see that third row, employed and living in Coral Gables, only 5.7% of their workers actually live and work. Doral, very, very. I would, I would guess that you're probably somewhere in that vicinity as well. So that's something that a lot of cities that we've worked with said they want to do something about. They want to create more jobs in our community if possible, especially if we have workers who are going great distances. And obviously, that, that obviously hurts your quality of life as well. And here's just a good example. We can actually look at where you, where your workers, where your working residents work, with what communities are they getting up and leaving house each day? And then, the ones that are coming in and taking the jobs. We did a study at West Kendall a few years ago, with this West Kendall Baptist Hospital. And what we found was, which is not surprising, I'm sure for any of you, anyone who lives here, a football stadium leaves West Kendall each day, and another football stadium, amount of people arrive each day coming from other locations to take those jobs. So that's the kind of mismatch that we have. We have a very strange economic geography that's been created over the years, over the decades, because of suburbanization, essential. One of the real things that we, a real areas, I should say, that we focus in on, this is Doral now, what we call the advanced industry sector. These are your best, these are the businesses that are growing, paying the highest wages. There's 50 of them. We want to focus in really quickly when we do a study on, do you have them in place already? Are you growing, are you losing them? Well, in this case, Doral is probably, you know, the leader in all of Florida in that regard in terms of the advanced industry, I see that, that those locations among many of the, many of those sectors. So if that's one we want to look at, we want to look at other sectors as well. Here's a case of Coral Gables in terms of their retail economy. They really want us to kind of focus in on that a bit, and especially after COVID, the pandemic. So what we want to look at is where are they right now? Well, obviously, they were having a resurgence, this was, this was just this past year. Obviously, they have strong brand recognition, a lot of diversification, place-making experiences, and a lot of innovation, data-driven technology because of their smart city vision. So that, that's something that's obviously really important to them. So these are the levels of analysis and the data that we typically do as part of the competitive assessment. Then the second element, as I said, is the actual plan itself. So we will take that competitive assessment, look at the policy implication, the planning implication of that competitive assessment, and begin thinking about, and once again, working with new stakeholders in the community, you know, what might be policies or initiatives that we could undertake to address what we found, both, both determining positive and some challenges from a competitive assessment. We obviously want to look at how we can manage the plan in-house, in management capacity, the performance metrics, which are really important in economic development, as they should be in good government in general, as you know. So really important that we look at those, and develop a dashboard that's typically included. Then the marketing of the plan itself. You know, how do you actually, once you have this plan in place, and you have these metrics, and real clear vision in terms of where you want to go, what you want to be, how do you begin marketing that? And then lastly, I just added a couple of slides, just to show you an example of what we do when we begin to really drill down to the locations. I'm thinking here, this is the Zion Innovation District of Coral Gables, but you could also, that would almost mirror Northwest 36th Street. So we began to focus on the land use, what's there, the uses, the types of industries are already located there. And then we, yeah, so we do a little bit more analysis, in this case, the actual zoning, that's in place. That way, we're able to actually determine if zoning is working in this general area. Obviously, we want to know, in this case, as the case here on Northwest 36th Street, you have a budding of surrounding residential uses that need to be considered. And then, in this case, once again, looking down a little bit further on the Dixie Highway in Florida of Coral Gables, focusing on, once again, you can see actually the buildings. There's an area that would have significant opportunities for Coral Gables, not only in terms of economic development, but also a gateway of South Miami into Coral Gables itself, which is lacking right now in the city. So these, once again, a little more elaboration, a little more drilling down on that as well. So that's the type of analysis that you can think of, use these examples, Northwest 36th Street, of what you want to really focus in on, or even other locations within the city's confines. So with that, that's kind of a quick overview, and if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Murray. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Especially for reconfirming that we don't stand alone in seeking and looking for a way to implement a successful strategic plan, or the process of doing it. So it's always good to hear the neighbors and communities that surround us are also seeking the same way. I think it's important, the only way we can guarantee a successful one. So the more data you have, the better it becomes. Thank you, you're very welcome.
Any questions? I do have, Dr. Murray, the competitive assessment plan. I didn't quite understand, once you do that, and my understanding is you pick cities to benchmark yourself to that you feel are desirable, that you would, you know, you're similar to in, in ability-wise, you'd like to use them as role model. But then, once the competitive assessment plan is done, how does that factor into the economic development? Like, you've looked at all the metrics for those cities, not sure how you use, you know, how you use that to make a decision with the economic development?
Yeah, what's a good question. The, the benchmarking is just looking at one level of analysis. Some communities do it, others don't. Some say they don't really need to do that. It, it's just one way of seeing how you stack up this activity against others. And then, for others, it's a way of benchmarking, benchmarking in terms of your performance. Because over the year, you can now look at, okay, well, how are they doing in terms of population growth? How are they doing in terms of job growth? So how are they doing in terms of, you know, keeping that, that young age group in place of target? So it's a way of monitoring and just to see how, what other communities are doing in that regard. But the actual plan is derived from a much larger assessment, which gets into your, your real estate, gets into the businesses that are here, as well as the ones that you may like to bring in, particularly in a place like Northwest 36th Street. And so what, what really happens with the competitive assessment is, as you're working with the stakeholders from the community, that's the way to get everybody on the same page. Because when you introduce that competitive assessment, and of course, you're working with the stakeholders while you're doing that, and it's always remarkable when people begin to find out things about their community they didn't know. And building consensus in terms of where we, what we do with this, where do we go with this from a policy perspective? It, it, so it's really, think about it as a fourth one, and then the plan, it would be the second report. Competitive assessment that we have found in every place we've been. Fort Myers, the Boring Beach, the Deerfield, Coral Gables, every place we've been is, is the part that really gets people involved. Because they, you like to look at these numbers and then comprehend them and say, wow, that's, that's who we are. And, you know, from both of an opportunity perspective, but also in terms of, well, maybe there were some things we can do, you know, to improve our economic base, to include, to improve job opportunities, the quality of life. And it gets people really, really involved, and I think really helps with building consensus. It's worked in every community we've been in. Especially if you go, you segue from that to the plan, the policy part becomes easy enough, because I think most people have already at that point understood what it is that you're trying to accomplish.
Yes, sir.
Your question made me think about a question. Murray, when you talked about this competitive assessment, I, my mind rolls towards the part of my brain that's economist, it's only a small part. But it reminded me of concepts like competitive advantages, comparative advantages in terms of cities, towns, countries, in other words, what are the things that? It reminded me of that when you talked about, you know, bringing people together, you know, to build the plan, but also at the same time, what is it that we have to offer, and where do we have the advantages over other places, and so on and so on.
Yeah, you have my sense of. No, no, absolutely. I, I, I think it's a really interesting experience for every municipality to, to understand your community relative to others, particularly one that you, that you think or one that you're interested in comparing yourself to. And not that Miami Springs needs to be compared yourself to anyone, in many ways, but economically, you do. Because obviously, you need economic growth, and you know that, to maintain and create a more resilient economic base. But at the same time, you're always mindful, and I'm sure you are, of the residents who work, live here and work either here in the community or elsewhere, and it's your way down the road, you know, other kinds of opportunities nearby, to be able to maintain that quality of life. You know, nothing is a given, as we all know, you found that out of the Great Recession, pandemic. So, so it's certainly understandable that, that most municipalities that we have worked with all want to be more in control of what their destiny is going to be. But, but it is, yeah, it, when we talk about competitive assessment, we are really, we're talking about competitive advantage, competitive advantage that you may have in certain areas, whether it be certain business sectors, whether you be a resident, resident worker, those who may have more of an education than maybe nearby other places. It really gives you an opportunity to really, to be boastful about who you are. Some communities that we come to, we come into, really don't have a lot to boast about. So they're struggling, they're looking for something. You know, a community like Miami Springs is all about a hands, and looking down the road.
Dr. Murray, with the economic development plan for these cities that you've been working with, do they do the entire city, or are they doing certain segments? Because in our case, and you were talking about competitive advantage, and thank you, Councilman Vescus, for bringing that up. The first thing that pops into my mind when we say competitive advantage for Miami Springs is location. We are, are not the best location in Miami-Dade County, and we'll, you know, stand up to anyone who disputes that. And also, some of the, like you said, in some cases, some municipalities don't have a lot going around, and we're not just in a location, but we have Miami International Airport across from us, which is looking at expanding greatly and taking opportunities of how Miami-Dade is growing. The Freedom Park, the soccer stadium, that presents a whole new opportunity for our city. So there's a lot of competitive advantages, I think, that Miami Springs has that other communities don't. That said, we have areas of Miami Springs that are residential, and we want to keep them like that. And for our residents, it's very, for all of us on the council, I'm sure, very important to keep our hometown or unique hometown atmosphere. And, you know, we're going to be celebrating our centennial soon, and we're very proud of that. So, but there are areas in Miami Springs that, you know, I think most people would agree need economic development with vision, with a plan. So is it possible to do those, or do cities just kind of do, look at the whole city anyway? Or would there be a reason not to just look at the areas of the city that were interested in economic development?
Well, it's a good question. I, I think, I'm trying to think of, I'm headed here, all those municipalities that I mentioned, all did citywide economic development plans, but many of them did focus on certain corridors. If you know Fort Myers, well, you know that from I-75 to Fort Myers, a long drive. And so they were really concerned about those long stretches of commercial boulevards that come in off I-75 all the way into the downtown, that were really, really underdeveloped, that really backshaped most of, particularly I'm okay with that, major, as you know, commercial railway going from I-75 to. So they, so they would focus on those. But the reason why they, they want to go citywide is because you want to bring in citywide resources, you want to make sure that everybody's involved with that. Because obviously, you have workers that live in those residential areas. You have educators, you have institutions here, you have businesses. You want to make sure that there is a community-wide plan in terms of building consensus, that there are policy decisions that are going to be made, relative to say in Northwest 36th Street, or some other section of the, of the community. You want that, you want them to understand, and that's why we do that competitive assessment, all those meetings and discussion, is that you don't want to just come in and be left in the aisle and say, well, here it is, you know, officially. So the community knows all along, so that's the process, whether this you're talking about, whether you're thinking, and what might be the opportunities. And then maybe not both of them. And that's why their input is so important. In some people's minds, maybe from a developer standpoint, or from a real estate standpoint, with certain types of uses they'd like to see on Northwest 36th Street. But Northwest 36th Street is really, in many ways, your gateway in terms of your, you know, who you are from a commercial, retail perspective, right? So you want the character of Northwest 36th Streets to reflect who you are as a community, both in terms of the uses, but also the design, and all the other things go with that. You know, and Coral Gables is mindful of that, but in other ways, they aren't. You know, you think about South, you think about Dixie Highway and U.S. Farm, that, that end of, the south side of Coral Gables is, is pretty. is pretty, um, you know, it doesn't really have any gateway, it doesn't have any real, um, cohesion of of any sort, which is very common in a lot of commercial corridors. So I think that's why a lot of attention is given to commercial corridors like Northwest thirty six street. Because many municipalities want those corridors to be reflective of you who you are as a community, not just the commercial corridor that happens to be blanked by our city, but a commercial corridor that when you enter it from either downtown towards from Miami or from there out, you know you're entering Miami Springs. This is not just another commercial strip. And and I think that's where we're seeing a lot more interest, is to create those that kind of thinking. And then, okay, I'll give you Fort Myers example again. They have so much planning and left about a lot of great things in downtown, which you know. But they also have a whole midtown that they're proposing. They want to make sure that these corridors that are coming in to their downtown areas, they're obviously where they want people to come, reflect that they fit the work, the work that they want, you know? So a lot of attention was given to design, you know, the types of mixed use that that they were looking to do. Uh, the architecture of what that might look like. And and so these these are really important considerations that I think I would imagine that since you have it on your book, says it's a district, you're probably very mindful, which is really good.
Thank you. And, um, last thing, uh, what timeframe are we looking for something like this? Like, how long does a competitive assessment normally take and then um, economic development plan follows after that, right? So.
Yeah.
What kind in general?
Typically about six.
For each or about?
Six months total.
In both, okay. Any other questions for Dr. Murray? Dr. Murray, thank you so much for, um, I I really appreciate you taking the time to come to our meeting and, uh, give us your insight, your wisdom, your professional expertise on this.
Anytime, my pleasure.
Thank you so much. Okay, um. If it's, okay, I know we have the F doc, um, presentation that I'm going to come in because I mean, I know it's a school night.
It is.
So if, um, everyone will, if not, you wouldn't mind one minute, we'll have the Girl Scouts. We're, uh, we're moving twelve, uh, item twelve A.
So there is open up. It's going on, it's only a half hour.
Here, here, yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Allison Bean, and I'm part of the Girl Scout Troop.
Sorry.
Um, the Girl Scout Troop two five six four is hosting our traditional trolley ride called the Polar Express on December sixteen from five to nine thirty P M. We respectfully request permission to close block one hundred and ninety westward to allow full traffic without danger to the pedestrians.
All right, thank you. And that has gone through our public works, Tammy, and, um, uh, they submitted a permit for this?
Yes, they have.
Okay, and are, is the city in agreement with this request?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, we have those in agreement then?
Yes.
Yes, we don't, I don't think we need a budget for that, we just need a consensus, but one makes sure. All right, Chair, who's Chair?
Yes. We have Miami Springs golf cart parade event. Is there going to be any conflict with that?
We changed the, well, there was some some changing, some changes, and now there's no conflict.
Okay. Well, we decided the route, so we're not gonna, I know the breaks like this thing, we're not gonna interact.
Yeah, there is no conflict.
Coming in the opposite.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good. All right, so wonderful. Thank you for having the event in Miami Springs. We're looking forward to it. It'll be a lot of fun and a lot of fun opportunities and choices for residents and visitors to have.
Like, actually, we have craft stations, it's tiny for the kids. I would have liked to have it on.
Wonderful, wonderful. And I want to thank your Girl Scout Troop, honey, you and and the other parents and the scouts for all that you do in our community. I know that you're very, very active, um, constantly in our community, and we greatly appreciate that.
And we still let you know, we'll start the sale start January eighth, and so you'll see us at my office.
Of course, I've been eating for three weeks.
And you're taking pre-orders already? Oh, okay, sorry. All right, thank you. Good night, girls. Okay, so, uh, next on our agenda, we have a presentation from F dot, and we have several representatives here to speak to us on, we had requested this on the, what's called the Iron Triangle Project and um, the Iron Triangle Project, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. It refers to, um, the intersection of Northwest Thirty Sixth Street and, uh, and Lejeune, basically, right? Uh, proposal that F dot is looking at to, um, improve traffic through the area, but of course, we're very concerned about any potential negative impact to our community.
Thank you. Good evening, um, Mayor and rest of staff. Thank you for having us here today. I'm Kira Leon, I'm the F T project manager. Um, for this project, with me I have Diana Sanjurjo, she's from, uh, Public um, involvement, and Julieta Manso, who is our, um, project manager of the company. Um, we're gonna, I just introduced all of us, we're gonna, uh, go, um, into the project background updates and, um, discuss schedule. And of course, we give some time for questions and, um, any feedbacks or concerns. I wanted to really quickly highlight our F D O T compass and all of the key aspects, um, in it. Um, this is, I think we can all agree that this is a project that's gonna touch on all of these, so, um, so I'm gonna now pass it to Julieta and so let's continue the.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Jida. Uh, my name is Julieta Manso with Hanson Professional Services. We're supporting F T O T on this project. And as Kira mentioned, um, all of these improvements revolve around the community, and F T O T's goal is just to make sure that every improvement that we do are for the community. So that's why we're here today. Uh, we want to let you guys know that we are working, um, on this section of thirty six Okeechobee and Lejeune Road, uh, which highly impacts your community. We're right there at your entrance. And from the early stages of the PDNE study, we want to make sure that we have an open communication, that you have an opportunity to provide your comments about the project, and to see the progress as we develop proposed improvements for this section of the interchange. Um, this is a very urbanized area in Miami Dade County. While we can all agree that it's it moves a lot of people, not just the people that live in these communities, but, uh, we have a lot of traffic that just goes through this area of the county. So our project includes the Iron Triangle Interchange, uh, we have Lejeune Road, uh, we have Thirty Sixth Street, Okeechobee Road, those are our three main corridors. Uh, but we are also so close that we will be, uh, also evaluating North River Drive, South River Drive, and Puenciana Boulevard. Uh, we are connecting directly to Stero one twelve, that's a system from the, um, Miami Greater Authority. And now we are coordinating directly with them since we are connecting, uh, to their ramps that connect directly to one twelve. We have several jurisdictions within our project. City of Hayalias, City of Miami Springs, Village of Virginia Garden, we have met with, uh, the three communities uh, already as part of our project briefing. Uh, we are also coordinating with Miami Dade County and the City of Miami, since we're all, uh, connecting at this point, uh, within the county. Several points of interest, Miami International Airport is located at this southwest quadrant of the interchange. A lot of traffic goes through this area, not just during peak hours, but there's constant, um, people moving in and out of the airport throughout the day. Miami Intermodal Center is across the airport, also generating a lot of traffic. And the Miami Freedom Park, which will be, uh, future located south, uh, on the same area, south of Lejeune. So these three major traffic generators will be evaluated as we look at the traffic and projections for this study area. A purpose and need was established for this project during the planning phase. Uh, the main purpose for this project is to address operational deficiencies and improve capacity uh, by relieving congestion and accommodating transportation demand to uh, future traffic that will be generated for the project. Improving safety conditions and also enhancing multimodal interrelationship. And what that is, the intermodal interrelationship is not just fixing the traffic uh, from the car perspective, but also improving on the bicycle and the pedestrian connectivity between all networks, uh, roadways that will be part of this project. And the project needs, uh, it just, uh, kind of like, uh, reiterate what the project purpose is. We need this project because we need to improve the capacity, the safety, and the moral interrelationship. A planning study was conducted in twenty fifteen, um, and it was completed in twenty twenty. It evaluated several alternatives. And, um, part of the planning, uh, phase is just to determine, uh, what improvements are needed or which are the areas of bigger concern of the project. So during the planning phase, there were two concepts that were developed. Um, are the, uh, you can see on the lines are the orange line. It's concept one, which is the extension of the westbound Stero one twelve, uh, westbound ramp to Thirty Sixth Street over Lejeune Road. I know it sounds a little complicated, but I have another slide that will show in more detail what this concept looks like. And then concept L three, it's Okeechobee Road overpass at Lejeune Road, which is the purple magenta line that goes along the Okeechobee Road. There were other several short-term improvements that were identified during the planning phase. Uh, these are some improvements that could be implemented as part of other ongoing, uh, F T O T projects. And we will be starting to program those, um, to start kind of enhancing some of the needs for the area, which are, for example, extending, uh, some of the sidewalks in some of the areas that are missing sidewalk to provide connectivity, some signal timing and a couple of the intersections that can help start improving some of the needs for the area, while we actually look at the bigger picture for the bigger improvements that are needed. So the first concept that I mentioned that was evaluated during the feasibility study, it's the extension of the one twelve ramp. Uh, it's, uh, let me see if I can point, can I point? It's this ramp, the existing condition now, it's a ramp that comes down, um, at grade before the canal. And, uh, right now you have to go through this intersection with South River Drive and then go through the intersection of Lejeune Road in order to continue west. And that's creating a lot of the backup and congestion at that intersection. So what this concept is doing is creating a new ramp that bypasses those two intersections and connects, uh, with the Thirty Sixth Street west of Lejeune Road. Um, this alternative will help alleviate some of that congestion that's at the at the at-grade level by moving traffic, uh, west of Lejeune. And the next concept that was evaluated during the feasibility study is the Okeechobee Road over Lejeune. Uh, you can see here, this one is Lejeune Road, it's the north is rotated, and then you have Okeechobee parallel to the canal. Uh, so what this concept is doing is elevating Okeechobee Road uh, to bypass the intersection of Lejeune. The entire Okeechobee Road is elevated, and that eliminates, uh, the conflict or the at the intersection of Lejeune and Okeechobee. It only leaves at grade movement to make left turns and right turns at that intersection. As I mentioned, these concepts were preliminary evaluated during the feasibility study. Um, these were presented to some of the municipalities, whilst the feasibility was to all the municipalities while the feasibility study was finishing. Now, during the PDNE study, our job is now to bring these concepts to the community. We find them and look for a solution that will meet the needs, uh, for for the project and create a project that is viable and that is accepted by by everybody. As far as traffic operations, when we look at the traffic analysis, we look at a twenty-five-year horizon. Uh, so we will be developing traffic projections for the year twenty fifth. Uh, so if we do no improvements to any of these corridors in twenty-five years, all of the intersections will operate at levels of service F. Uh, we grade the traffic as similar to the grading systems, book grading system, where A is the best condition and F will be the worst condition. So if we do no improvements, all of the intersections will operate at level service F. We already have several of the intersections right now that are already operating at levels of service F, but they will get to a worse, uh, condition, uh, in the twenty-five-year horizon. We will be looking at, um, alleviating some of those skewings that are extended along the one twelve main line. And we're also, of course, going to be incorporating the future, uh, traffic demand by the Miami Freedom Park that is going to be coming into the area and will be creating additional congestion than what we have right now. So what's a PDNE study? What you see on the left side is the transportation improvement process, and it consists of six phases. The planning phase is the first phase, which determines the need for a project and starts evaluating the project so that it can get programmed for the next phases of development. We're now in the second phase, which is the project development and environment study. Uh, during this phase, as you can see on the right side of the chart, we do a lot of data collection, we evaluate existing conditions, traffic analysis to determine what are the actual needs at each of the intersections and for the main lines uh, for all the corridors, and we develop concepts that will meet all those, uh, needs for the project. Once we develop concepts, we'll create different alternatives, and we'll have an opportunity to share with the community some of these alternatives and get feedback to see what works uh, best for the communities and what people actually, uh, can provide feedback, uh, on this project. Well, after we have evaluated alternatives, we will identify a prefer alternative to bring as part of our recommendation for this project. Uh, we'll have three opportunities for following engagement. The first one is the public kickoff meeting, which we will be scheduling early next year. The next opportunity will be the Alternatives Public Meeting, uh, which is the opportunity where the public and the communities get to see some of the concepts that we will develop. And then the public hearing will be a final, uh, meeting where we will show a final recommendation, um, that will be packaged to be moved into the design phase of the project. After we have a final recommendation, then this project moves into the design phase, the construction, if there's any runaway acquisitions that gets taken care between design and construction, and then the maintenance. But public involvement is a key component for the PDNE study. And now we will be having public meetings and public engagement opportunities throughout the life of this project. This is just a summary of how the schedule looks based on those steps from the previous slide. Uh, we began this project in June of twenty twenty-three, this summer. So we are in that process of gathering a lot of, uh, data collection, uh, doing our existing conditions analysis. And we will be having our public kickoff dinner, uh, which will be the next public engagement opportunity. Just to let the community know and present, kind of like similar to this presentation, let people give their feedback, what are their concerns, uh, where where do they see the bigger issues? Because, um, although I drive this area very often because I live in Doral, so I go through here a lot. Um, it's not the same when we can hear the feedback from the people that live in the community and maybe there are areas that have more concern where traffic that are not just during the peak hours where we're evaluating some of the traffic, but we can get, uh, better understanding of the corridor as we hear, uh, from the actual community. We are anticipating to have this project completed by mid twenty twenty-five. If we develop a concept that is viable for everybody and and that can move into the design phase. Um, as far as funding, the PDNE is already funded. Um, we started fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Preliminary engineering, it's also funded, and construction, it's partially funded. So it's, um, that's a sign that the project is being prioritized, and the department is moving this project along, and we could, we understand that there are several components of it, but we could probably face it as funds get available, we could probably face some of the improvements as the project moves along. I mentioned public participation, it's a key component for the project. Uh, the kickoff meeting, we have a tentative date of February twenty-first. Um, I didn't want to put it in the slides, so just in case we had to make any changes, but we have been coordinating uh, with Miami Springs on a location, and we will be using most likely the community standard that you guys offered during our meeting. Uh, we already had a, a visit to the location, and we presented it to the department, and it's it's been approved, so we're trying to confirm that all the dates work for everybody in the D O T, um, no conflicts with any other cities, but most likely our meeting will be February twenty-first. We will be sending out mailouts to the community. Um, we will be contacting all the cities so that we can publish that, uh, information. If you can put it in your website, that will increase participation so that we can gather, uh, more people to participate on this kind of meetings. Uh, we have a fact sheet for the project that includes, uh, a lot of the key information for the project. Uh there's a project website that we have created, it's on the uh on the fact sheet, included in the fact sheet. Um you can always download information. All of the latest uh project information will be uploaded into the project website. And um you can always have copies of every presentation that we do. Uh once we develop concepts and we have the Alternatives Public Workshop, we will have engineering and environmental documents. So that people can uh have an opportunity to review uh the process throughout the P D A E. Okay? And with that, um I would like to invite everybody to our public kickoff meeting when that information becomes available. Um that's kind of like one of the most important milestones for our project is those public engagements. Because that's when we get feedback from the community and those are very important for us. Because we want to make sure that we build a project that is uh helps the community and improves the community. Or something that is going to be impacting the community. I know we talked to the mayor and we got some of the concerns written down. Those will be taken into account when we look at the concepts. Uh we know that the uh the two concepts that were looked at in the feasibility study will be refined, they're not set on stone. Uh we still have to look at the traffic and uh you know, all the environmental impacts that those projects can create. Uh but once we have refined concepts, we'll, you know, we will be happy to come back and share those with.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Specifically interested because I'm very visual. So the rendition are not as developed as I would like to see them. Um so first a comment, I drive on one twelve all the time at all hours. You know, have to take that thirty six street exit and people are buying for moving and then you've got two lights and and I get it. I understand the the from the traffic control. I understand that perfectly well. Um you know, the the ramp going to Okeechobee again makes a lot of sense. Because people don't have to go down and then get back on um on on Okeechobee road going west. But my concern is this. Uh the ramp will extend from one twelve, so there will not be an exit ramp anymore. It's an extension over both roads. It's where it comes down that I'm concerned. In other words, how far down is it going to go? Uh it looks like it's going to go past. And then there's the uh E B hotel. Um you know, it's 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 the concept of where it lands. And how does the traffic merge? How does affect the the business community there? Um just a little bit further on the other side of 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 E B bank. I mean, E B hotel is uh Wells Fargo and 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 some other businesses. So do you have a a sense yet or when you think we might be able to see? We're we're talking about a ramp like the ramps that, you know, you have a twenty fifth street cousin coming in off of uh. The Palm Metal, which I actually take part of it to get to thirty, you know, go around and get to thirty sixth street. Uh that's quite a long ramp, by the way, but that's not what we're talking about here. But be that as it may, it has to go over somewhere and it has to land somewhere.
Yes.
And 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 how does that impact um those areas, those businesses? Um egress, you know, uh from uh from those streets that come across. Um but I didn't see that in the rendition. If you could go back to that where you had that over, I think it was in yellow. That's the one, that's the one. So uh so it looks like uh uh that intersection is, that's right behind uh.
Yeah, you have the.
It's the aircraft.
If you if you can, is is this on, I'd like our community to be able to see it. Is it showing the like the screen? Is it this one or this one?
Yes.
This one, okay, so if councilman, I'm so glad you're saying that, so just we're all on the same page.
Yes.
Because this is a public meeting, it's the only time we can all discuss this. This is what my understanding is, this is the ramp here on the south side where you get on one twelve.
The existing one, yes.
So it appears to me that you're going to have a similar ramp on the north side, about the same length, putting way back here. And this is my concern, if you can imagine the impact for our businesses, not just of where the traffic ends. But we're going to have a ramp covering the air, the the main, the area that we're talking about economic development. We're going to have a ramp covering all of that. And we already have a ramp in computer that that cut our city in half. From, so I'm glad we have an opportunity to swipe to see it all.
Yeah, okay, so.
And my understanding is from, is it appears to be about the same distance as the ramp on the south side.
Yeah, so that it can clear out the Le June. So yeah, it's about the same elevation, so it clears out the Le June, the same as as the other ramp. But like I mentioned, we're we're refining the concepts. At this point, we don't have a set, it's not, this is not the alternative that is moving for sure. It comes from the facility, but that's what the intent of this ramp was doing. Uh we were trying, we're going to try to also look, uh this concept eliminated this off ramp here. So we will also look at opportunities to modify the ramp so that we can come, we can keep this access here for the locals. And not eliminate that so that they can still access all these areas uh while still providing.
It's past E B.
It's the same ramp as the.
It's past the E B hotel, the aircraft.
So in essence, we're talking about gateways to our industrial, you know, commercial areas and other essence. And don't get me wrong, and I've said this before.
I know.
F dot, um you know, anything that we discussed, F dot, their job and their doing is to move. Traffic throughout the county, you're looking at the big picture and that's your responsibility. Ours obviously is to make sure that anything that happens. And and my position is if not just negatively impacts our city, make sure that doesn't happen. But anything that happens around us should provide enhancements to our city. It should make it better, shouldn't just be we're toler, you know what I'm saying? This is a great opportunity for F dot, I think, at looking at that corner. Because that ramp was created and and I'm repeating this because we're in a public news or my council member, my co-council can hear it. But I know I've uh um J C and I have already spoken to F dot about this. Is this an opportunity to um to rectify what was done in the past where our city was cut in half? From our Abraham track to this with a ramp cutting through. Um so all of this work and I I I don't envy you, I know it's very, very complicated, but I know.
Um it can, you know, you'll be working out to. A lot of the challenges to the right away, so trying not to, um because that's been one of the biggest issues to bring improvements at this location. For example, thirty six and Le June, there's no left turn lanes because there's no space for left turn. So the traffic has to continue the South River Drive and if you're going to go north, you have to go through the Holiday. So there's a lot of issues, not just there at the intersection, but with all the other intersections. That we cannot fix the problem by just fixing one of them. We will look at improvements throughout all of the network system so that it can alleviate and one helps the other. If we fix one, the other, it's still going to have a problem. So we understand, you know, the rotation, if you're going on Puenciana south and you need to go north, you have to, you know, do all loop around. There's several, I I think there's like five different.
It's not just the loop, it's that that South Road Puenciana, this was created a long time ago, you know. Uh but South Road Puenciana should is, you know, one of our major uh roads. And we should be able to continue and reach the rest of our city through it. Not all of a sudden have, you know, a huge ramp into um to Hialeah and to Okeechobee. From the airport that, you know, that wasn't the case not that long ago. Yeah, but you know, it's not something that's always been there, it was, I'm not sure when that was done, but you know, what, that's decades ago. Right, and I I don't don't understand how that happened, you know, without the thought of. Uh and again, I know you're doing your best to try to move traffic throughout the county, so um. We understand that, but it really does, that is something that needs to be addressed. We need to have a way on South Road Puenciana to continue through to the rest of our city. That is a gateway, we're talking about gateways to our city. Um and and it's an eyesore right now, but an impediment to business development there. And certainly can't have it now, you know, the same uh another.
It it cuts through, it, yeah, it cuts through the sort of movement of the traffic. Then everybody has to go down through thirty six in order to move around, so that creates the additional congestion. And we know the canal, it's also a factor. I mean, how many crossings do we have on the canal, because after you go south.
You know where you have room is this whole side of the airport, south of uh north plus thirty six street. This ramp, you come down here and go go far west and use that whole, the the airport property on there. Um there's an awful lot of of room there. And that would be on the south side of the ramp, the eastbound ramp to northwest thirty street without, you know.
But the west, the westbound traffic would be on the south side.
Somehow you have to cross it all.
You have a ramp, ramp that I was talking about. There is a ramp uh that comes down on the west side of northwest thirty six. There is one that's there already, it's an eastbound. It's eastbound, going westbound, westbound. Yeah, you're going west, you're going towards the ramp. Yeah, you're going towards the ramp, it's they it it brings you down to the right, because I I've used that before. So there is a possible concept using the suggestion of the mayor. But then it, you know, it takes, you know, some engineering to bring it down on the left side of the city.
Many different intersections, you would enter thirty sixth street at different, well, obviously, we're telling them.
No, I like it, I like it, I like the creativity.
It has to, we're all for.
No, and and this is, this is the fun part, when we brainstorm and we try to come up with something that would actually be better and an improvement.
Addressing the problem to a such a low pressure, that means addressing. But as you can see, we uh, sorry, I got excited. Um eh you know, we are in the midst, in the five hour agenda of uh of uh, you know, future development in the city. And this is one of the areas that we're considering. And the Abraham track, which is an important connection to what, so we want you to have a uh a also a bird's eye view.
And and it appears from what, is there now that when those decisions were made, you know, that intersection? That part of Miami Springs, that corner of Miami Springs, which is a very important, we're a three square mile city. So every square inch of our city is important, there's no, you know, space that that isn't. Um and I'm sure every city feels like that, but I think in our cities particularly. So um that intersection, it it appears that that no thought was given to the fact that this is a city. That we're cutting through and we're slicing in half. Um and again, I don't know how that happened, I know it wasn't you, but it's that that's why I am so much on guard on this. Um to make sure that that doesn't happen, but also that there are ways to rectify what's been done. So that we gain back our access on South World Puenciana to the rest of our community.
Definitely, no, we're looking forward to developing some concepts that can actually uh improve the community and create a gateway. Um and represent what the city has and, you know, being able to have better access. For not just your citizens and residents, but people that want to visit the city.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I guess uh it probably doesn't make sense for D O T to get into a economic impact study. But it seems like you have to do all other studies, but yet to present the public the good understanding. So we could say it, it's obvious, but it's hard, unless you give them hard numbers. For what the actual economic impact, it's a little bit more uh noticeable to everybody who's making these decisions. So it would be nice to see an economic impact study as well.
Alright.
But obviously, it's probably not the most beneficial thing, because it's going to stick out with true numbers and. You know, we can talk about it, but I think, you know, if we had to put it down in a study, it'd have a lot more impact. But it's hard, I guess, you could try to promote something and then you get something that's going to probably come out very negative.
No, we we do when we evaluate the alternatives, because we're, we need to have more than one option as we come up with alternative. But we we will have um our evaluation criteria into socioeconomics, uh right away impacts. Uh a historical, cultural impacts, environmental, we have the canal next to it, the canal is historic. So we have to preserve impacts, avoid all impacts to the canal as much as possible. And and we do a whole source of evaluation of different categories from the environmental point of view, the socio-cultural, natural. Physical impacts, aesthetics is included in it. And that gets displayed at the Alternatives Public Workshop on how we came up with this alternative. Once we come up with an alternative. So we'll probably have what's the noble alternative and what the existing conditions have. And we always compare all the eval, of the alternatives that we're evaluating with the noble. Because if it gets to a point that our socioeconomic impacts and our cultural impacts and our natural impacts are greater than. Improving the corridor, then the noble is better. And we don't leave the roadway the way it is because we're creating more impacts than what we have. And then we have to figure out some other way to move traffic. Um but but that gets included as part of the evaluation process. We look at social, economics, cultural, natural, physical. So although that gets uh evaluated uh into an evaluation matrix, it goes into an evaluation matrix. So that we can actually compare and look at what are the better options, not just the one that moves the traffic faster. Sometimes we don't end up with a bigger and greater alternative in the past. Because it has right away impacts or prelocations or any other um impacts related to that matrix. So we'll we'll have that at the public alternatives meeting when we get an opportunity to show the alternatives. And people get to see what is it that one was better than the other. Because sometimes we look at it from a, if, you know, depending on who you are, you look at it from a point of view. And then, but once you get to compare all the different areas, then you realize, yeah, maybe this is better than.
Well, any questions?
I have a thought.
Yes, sir.
This has got nothing to do with what you're doing, but I have raised this before in the days, so I decided to go find that. Uh because when I hear iron triangle, I don't hear the iron places. No, that's, that reminds me of the Vietnam War. The Iron Triangle was a stronghold of the communists between North and South Vietnam. And you know, it's it it just rings that way. Um I'm not making a big deal about it, but I may.
And I'm glad you pointed that out, because you know, a lot of people have asked the same question, but I, we don't. It's been called the Iron Triangle for many years already.
Yes.
And we thought about, do we keep on calling it Iron Triangle? But then we started researching and a lot of people referenced it back to it um from the, so. We kept the name of it, we'll clean it up so that it has a new reputation.
Any other questions?
We do have a few more. One of the the things is uh with this concept too.
Very often I see F dot construction on the roads is that um you, I can call them all those lanes. But it happens to me all the time now when I'm driving in ninety county that I know where Bird Road is, but I really had to get on it. You know, six miles ahead of time to get on the exit.
Yeah, city, it's a city system, it's a city connector, dis, collector distributor.
And I'm guessing it's to just get the traffic off so you're not backed up on it. So it seems like that could be done without entering into our city, you know, going uh west of Le June. And you can start a system uh lane like that way back along one twelve. So that you get the exit and you still wind up not dumping into, you know, our city and and having an overpass into our city. But starting that collector lanes.
It it had something similar at that exit ramp where you go farther back and that's the Okeechobee exit. That you have thirty six and Okeechobee and it starts distributing it. No, not in the, not in this town, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, when you go down on Palm Metal and you have to exit Sunset, then you have to start exiting on Miller. Yeah, I understand what you mean. Um the other thing.
It was a while time, people were just running over. Yeah, for the Okeechobee exit and for the thirty six, because you'd be waiting and people would just jump in.
Now you have to, like, I have to pay attention, like, I know where the exit is where I want to go, but I, you know, I'm like, oh, but wait, I missed it, you know? It's like, I think tourists have easier.
That's why I told myself to have the GPS, right?
Okay, um the other thing was um uh environmental impact. The environmental impact from, because you said the three reasons for this is safety, capacity. Capacity to me means increased capacity, to handle increased capacity that you're expecting, that you're.
Yeah, it's looking down the road, the increased capacity that he needs. To satisfy the capacity needs, right? It could be either rerouting traffic some other way or it's, it doesn't necessarily mean adding more lanes, adding more capacity. It's just addressing capacity needs. So if uh for example, if there's a lot of traffic at that intersection, because people is rerouting from Puenciana to get to thirty six. And it's to address that capacity issue, we can create a better access for Puenciana. So drivers don't have to go through that intersection, so we can address the capacity needs without adding lanes at that intersection, maybe. Um that's an example.
But when you have a a overhead ramp, an elevated, I guess, roadway.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Isn't the community next to it, I mean, our residential community, um right now with the uh Okeechobee one that you're talking about extending that. For emissions, increasing. For emissions, increased emissions to be released at a higher level and noise.
Well, the, no, noise analysis will get addressed, uh, that's included, we'll evaluate noise, we'll put noise sensitive. Uh, receptors and we'll do a full noise analysis, uh, for the overpasses sometimes, um. Depending on the protection of the noise, because yes, once you're raising the road, the protection extends.
It's higher, so it's. You know, it's affect more of our residents.
That gets evaluated, eh, and if the noise levels are increased higher than the threshold. Uh, noise ramps get uh implemented.
But that's after the fact.
No, that gets evaluated as part of the PDNE, so if the noise study, it's included in the PDNE study. It's one of the many different reports that we prepared and it's part of one of the those uh evaluation criteria that we include. And once we develop an alternative that we recommend, that gets incorporated into the noise analysis and at that point it gets. Determine if there's a noise barrier needed, once the project moved to design, that barrier won't need to happen, because the PDNE said that the noise. Impacts certain areas, so the PDNE will address.
I'm sorry, the emissions, air quality?
Air quality, it's also, yeah, we do. Doing the PDNE step, before even goes to the some, so we do air quality, noise, natural resources, cultural resources. Um. Socio-cultural and socio-economics report, uh preliminary engineering report that looks at the concepts. Um, traffic analysis interchange modification report, because this is an interchange area, so we look at. How traffic impacts not just this area, but how changes in the in the configuration of this interchange may affect. The twenty seventh thousand interchange, which is next to the east, so there are several reports that we'll have to produce. In order to support that alternative and to say this, yes, this is the best option, or you know what, no, this doesn't work, this is the better option. Before we actually move into a design, so all those reports get done during the PDNE phase.
To the chair.
Yes.
I had a question, just because out of curiosity, I know that we have those fast pass lanes that we have on the expressways. Um, and we also have our mass transit system, which is, you know, most likely before using buses. Would it be in the near future, because our our um. Our structure, the way that Miami is built, sort of built, it's not like, you know, Washington DC and New York, where they plan mass transit underground, it's a way, we don't have that. That altitude, would there be in the future perhaps a fast lane just for public transportation to get the actual mass transit off the normal streets? So that they can move faster?
There have been studies, um, especially closer to this area to connect the north-south connector. Uh, to extend that Metro Rail station north to increase some of that transit, but you were referring just to buses? Or for like trains or?
I mean, trains, I don't see, I mean, I could be wrong, I just don't see a, it would be great to see a couple of car lanes and then one train lane if that's feasible, but. I think that's a little bit far fetched by now, other than the bright line that we have, which is a a good idea to start with, but right now, I mean, we have the lanes. Um, just trying to see how we can get mass transit to go on a lane where there's no obstruction, no, um, yeah. They may have a light or two, but something that just keeps those buses going. But it's not, it's kind of like defeating the purpose as well, I mean, uh, people don't wanna go on the bus because they're stuck in traffic too.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of improvements, um, we could look at additional improvements here, but um, some of those fast lane transit routes. Uh, have been coordinated, for example, eight thirty-six, the shoulder, it's a, it's a, they're willing for uh transit in case there's traffic. You can see that the buses on the regular lanes when there's no traffic, but when there's backup traffic, they're using the shoulder. Um, to bypass all the traffic and and move faster, in these areas, since we're so limited to with the right away. It is a constraint to dedicate one lane at this moment, uh, but if the demand increases, I'm sure.
And you guys are projecting for the future, so we know the population's gonna increase, right?
Yeah.
And then those shoulder lanes are just like that, like you go, but then you stop, you have to get in, it's not like, uh, it's more for, um. Safety, right, police and.
Well, the uh, what they have on on eight thirty-six, which they started it as a pilot, but it's it's working out and I think it's gonna be implemented in more of the expressways. It it's a shoulder for, used for emergency vehicles, like if you're uh break down, you just park on the shoulder. But uh when there's nobody break- that breaks down, the shoulder is used for the buses, so it's helping move the transit faster.
When we had the Zoom meeting with J C and your staff about a month ago, um. It appeared to me that you expected this project to go into construction, did I, let me ask this. I understood now with your presentation that you expected it to start construction in twenty twenty-five. Let me go to the sketch.
It is, um, no, not not that it's gonna go in construction in twenty twenty-five. We, the PDNE started in twenty twenty, and sorry, twenty twenty-two, we have a two-year schedule. If everything looks perfect and we find a perfect solution that can move forward into the design phase. When we're done in twenty twenty-five, the project moves into design.
Okay, okay, I I thought that time schedule hasn't changed from when we spoke before.
So that's the uh the funding, where you see the funding, the preliminary engineering, it's already funded for twenty twenty-eight, that will be the design phase.
Okay.
And then construction is being funded for twenty thirty-two, which will be when the construction is programmed to start.
Okay.
So there, there's still partially funded for construction, but between now and twenty thirty-two, there's a, you know. Any other questions?
I had a question, man, um, okay, so just to be clear, going back.
One more, hold on.
As we had mentioned though, it's, uh, it's Coolidge.
That's East Drive, I believe, East Drive. No, that's.
More and share, right, and then after that, it's like Ravenly Forest and then, right, because we talked about that, is that being. Is it absolutely necessary for the ramp to extend all the way, those three blocks of Coolidge and more sharing? And I know that the eastbound ramp that runs this way has to jump on to the one twelve. I know that if that has that particular elevation, is it absolutely necessary for that ramp to take those three blocks for them to get off?
The the gray area that you see, that you see here, it's a bridge section. And then this portion in yellow is where it starts coming down.
Is the ramp.
Uh-huh, so we have this portion, eh, it's hard to see, but we have an extra link underneath. So we can provide for that left turn that you have at this signal. So in order for us to be able to keep that lane and not sacrifice it, we're extending a little bit and then bringing the ramp where the median is right now. So that's why it is extended a little farther than the uh, than the uh south existing ramp. And uh, yeah, I know it sacrifices this intersection and it it also sacrifices this intersection, because. Your ramp ends here on your father's left lane, so you can't really turn from here, so when we looked at it. If we ended it here around this location, they're still not gonna be able to make it, it needs a little space for people to actually cross over to the next. Uh, segment, so that's why they have it here, um, starting here, so that we can uh take use of that lane that's underneath. To provide for the left turn. But again, we're refining all of these concepts, we can look at options, second, we lose the footprint and um. And eliminate some of those impacts that are already generated by this.
I mean, I understand the need, if you've ever, if you've ever been coming on the one twelve, the the traffic to get off backs up. Like, almost all the way back to twenty-seven, like, you spend twenty minutes just waiting to get off, getting those two intersections. Across Thirty Six and then in order to move that traffic, then anybody coming north on Lejeune, in order to turn left on the Thirty Six, you're. You know, the lights are very short and it it just backs up a lot of traffic in every direction.
Yeah, a lot of challenges, but we're taking the challenge, so we'll come up with something good.
And like we had mentioned before, there's gonna be other opportunities for, you know, for feedback and comments and questions, we're gonna have the public kickoff meeting, which. Everyone is invited, and we're gonna have other project team members there, we're gonna have boards, um, you know. Coffee. Um, you know, and and you'll be able to come up to other project team members and and ask your questions and get specific answers. Um, so we're encouraging everyone, you know, and the public to 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 attend, because that's the kind of feedback that we take back. And they use to, you know, continue with, um, you know, these uh developments and alternatives.
And before we we present the Alternatives Public Workshop. Uh, we will have an opportunity, because we have, we created a project advisory team, where we have members of the uh of the city participating. Um, the intent for that is to present to the project advisory team. The concepts that we'll be looking at, that will be presented to the public, so that there's an opportunity for feedback. And we can always come back to the cities and show them uh what we're looking, before we actually meet with the public, so we can get some uh feedback again and. And participation.
Well, thank you so much, who's on the project advisory committee from our city on this? Okay, all right, good, good, then, all right, so again, thank you very much for presenting this, I I know it's a project, but it's a very.
No, it is a project that.
And it's a project that we have to work all talent, so we can meet the needs for everybody, because what's important for for one city may not be important for the other, but we have to.
Take into account. And as much as moving traffic is important to us, it's extremely important that in no way do we cause anything, any part of our. Particularly, which I think was very timely, that we had Dr. Murray speak about economic development for that corridor. And what we need to do in a gateway of even something like Coral Gables of looking and making sure it's attractive. So eh, one thing kind of fed into the other, that you understand uh how important it is that, um, in no way does this. Be um our our um business area, an area that we um. Uh, value greatly and that we want to see major improvements on, um, but also, like I said, with South Royal Puenciana. To make sure, there's no reason that you go down South Royal Puenciana and you hit Lejeune and you have to go right and all this, that, you know, we shouldn't be able to continue through. The rest of our city, that's a very attractive um road, and it's going to be even more and more as we. Uh, plant more uh Royal Puenciana trees and spend a lot of improvements on it, so.
Well, thank you so much for inviting us to present the project.
Being here, we greatly appreciate.
Look forward to uh finding a final alternative that will come present and everybody uh each have it.
And if you have any questions, you have um curious email, we have this email, my email, so you can just, you know, send us. Your questions, any concerns, anything you want to think about, or we will happy to do so.
Okay, wonderful, thank you again, thank you for being here. Okay, so, um, we will move now to open forum, thank you. For your patience, for those of you that signed up for open forum, we had uh long presentations, but very important ones. Uh, so, let's see, first for our public forum is Carlos Lumpi. Yes, sir, and uh let me make this statement before, I like to make it before, as Mr. Lumpi comes up. Um, public forum is, uh, as you know, it is uh a mechanism for. Uh, a resident to speak to the council all at once, to address us all at once in a public forum. Um, and for us to listen, so it's a one-way communication, like I like to stress, we listen to you, we don't respond, these aren't. Um, agenda items that are for discussion, but we're all ears and also I'd like to ask. Um, and uh everyone to keep their comments to three minutes max. Okay, let's allow three minutes, since we asked them to wait so long and uh we only have four people, thank you, yes, sir.
Season's greetings to everyone. My name is Carlos Lumpi, one eighty-one Hammond Drive, in our eleventh year. I, I appreciate being able to speak on a topic which I haven't heard on this diet. For some of us, uh, we had a life-altering change uh here in Miami Springs. On the second Sunday of last month, when uh Miami Day Transit ceased. Coming through our city. And that's sad, it really is, uh, for those of us who can't drive, for whatever reason. Uh, and depended on ingress and egress out of our city, uh, we no longer have that. Um, as Mayor Mitchell well pointed out, we are blessed with a location that is incomparable. And yet we are isolated in this triangle of fourteen thousand people. From Thirty Sixth Street, uh, up to the Okeechobee Canal, from the Doral. It's only one way over the railroad and then this corner that we've been talking about on Lejeune. Um, so it doesn't look that the county is going to help us out. And as a resident of Miami Springs, I have no other place to go than to this council. And perhaps ask that next time you uh form a budget, that you perhaps uh extend. The Miami Springs Virginia Gardens shuttle bus uh to the weekends. Not just a Monday through Friday service, but one that would extend into Saturday and Sunday, uh, so that we would have. Less of this isolation, where we still would be able to, uh, those of us, again, who don't drive or. Have a car, that we can still get out of the city and back home. Uh, additionally, I I'd ask that you uh consider uh another stop. I always thought that the Miami Intermodal Center, and it took so many years to finally get it done. But it's wonderful, because if you get to the Intermodal Center, you can get on another bus. You can rent a car, you can get on the Tri-Rail and go all the way up to West Palm in an hour and a half with about twenty stops. And uh you can also go to M I A, you get up on that uh little shuttle they have, a small train. And you can take your flight, um, right now, we stop at the. E B Hotel, that's one stop that we have on our shuttle. Um, but then you have to get on another one that will take you into the airport. Now, uh, a mile away on Twenty First Street. East of the airport, um, and closer to Douglas on Thirty Seven. Uh, is the uh Miami uh Intermodal Center, and I think we should be part of it. Where uh if we are in Miami Springs, we would have less congestion into the airport itself, and yet. Uh, we could do all of those things, rent a car, get on the Tri-Rail, uh, go to the airport or get on another bus. But uh, uh, it's true, of the fourteen thousand, a vast majority uh drive a car to get in here. Uh, but lastly, let me just point out that if you are an employer, if you are a business owner, and you're looking to. Locate, uh, not along Thirty Sixth Street, but here closer to the circle. Um, one of their considerations is, it's okay, I'm coming in, I have a dozen, maybe two dozen employees. Between both full and part-time, and they don't all have cars, but it would be nice uh to have. Public transportation and that would enhance uh. Miami Springs in many different ways, and thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpi.
And to each and every one of you, I wish you a joyous, happy Merry Christmas, thank you, thank you.
Sir, same to you. Okay, our next uh president is Vincent Mendel.
Vincent, we, there, just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. Spend such a long night, I'm just gonna skip by for the next meeting, so I just want to appreciate everything you have done here. And it's complicated and uh, and I don't know, most of, most of you will probably not be around here in ten thirty, uh, twenty, thirty-six. But you're gonna, you're gonna set the foundation for a good, but good plan, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Hutchins.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I have a couple of quick points. What's going on with the golf course? A lot of people are asking, and nobody seems to know anything. It's way behind schedule. Should have been open, and I know we're losing a lot of money, but it took us years to buy it back from the county. And it's something that people need to know about. Um. And the town center, that's another issue. There's all kinds of architectural issues, I guess, over there. It's not ADA compliant for the stores. Whatever else, so who's gonna be responsible for that? It won't be Miami Springs, I'm sure, but at least he gets a bottom of it. And the east side, we we already have funding for the flooding problem on the east side to to fix the old range. And we haven't started it yet either. I don't think we can find a contractor. Or what, but we just want to see something come, something happy come up soon. So that's it. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Jacob Del Valle.
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell, and councilwoman and all the councilmen here. Um, I was very much, uh, how can I say? My name is, I'm sorry, Jacob Del Valle. Um, my wife is Denise Del Valle Coons, the elder daughter of Carol Goins Coons, as we all know. In Miami Springs, this is a beautiful person that has just passed away and did marvelous work here in the city to all. I was blessed to have her as my mother-in-law. And I'm sorry that the children are not here, but unfortunately Karen Coons and Joey Lane Coons, the other daughters, they now live in Jacksonville. And Robert Coons is managing Cozy Corner now and has two young children, so they have to go to school and he couldn't make it. So I'm representing the Coons family here. The first thing, thank you so much to Councilman Jorge Santi to give the suggestion. Of naming a road for Carol Coons. Um, it's, I'm very proud to say I was, she was my mother-in-law. I was one of the lucky ones, and I didn't even call her mother-in-law or mother. I called her Mother Teresa. And I needed to mention that because she gave so much to everybody, not only to our families, but to the community. And I'm very proud of this community that I live in. I'm sorry, I didn't say my address. It's five eighty-five Curtis Parkway. And I want to thank again the councils, the mayor, and all constituents for. Doing a resolution to approve a road for Carol Coons. It's the best gift you can give to this woman and to our family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so that ends our open forum, and now we move to um, approval of council minutes for November thirteenth.
Motion to approve. Thank you.
Second, any discussion? All vote please, by Mayor Bravo. Yes, Councilman Santi.
Yes.
Councilman Behead.
Yes.
Councilman Vasco.
Hi.
Mayor Mitchell. Yes, the motion carries. Okay, thank you. Um, the uh, we are deferring item seven A. Um, to I think our February meeting. January. January meeting, okay. Um, the update from uh, Mr. Glendals couldn't be here tonight. So that'll be the update from our regulation commission will be uh, deferred to the January meeting. Okay, so we move to consent agenda. Does anyone have any item that they'd like to pull from the consent agenda to discuss?
The motion to uh, pull uh, G.
Okay, nine G, anyone else? Okay, is it?
The motion to approve it.
Nine A, do you have?
Doctor.
Any discussion? All vote please, by Mayor Bravo. Yes, Councilman Santi.
Yes.
Councilman Behead.
Yes.
Councilman Vasco.
Hi.
Mayor Mitchell. Yes, the motion carries. Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and now discuss item um, nine G. Do you want to read the resolution? Yes, please. Ready? Nine G is the resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Miami Springs for approving a first amendment to the professional services agreement between Green Services Inc. For golf course maintenance labor stopping services, providing for authorization, providing for an effective G. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. In reference to this uh, contract that's, you know, up here in front of us to get renewed, I guess I'd like to just. Notify the public, I guess, what the process was, not getting a request for proposal. And uh, and if it is the case, because of timing, um, do we have an avenue in case the work is not properly in the future? Uh, that we can get out. Yes, this contract provides for thirty-day outlaws for whatever reason. Um. This contract has been bid up every five years, uh, you know, in the past for the past thirty years. And Green Street had been providing services here. They won the bid every, every time. Um, well, at least for the last twenty years. At least twenty years. Um, this time, yeah, you're right, the, we ran out of time. The contract expired in the summer. So, um, if they don't perform, I'm not afraid to come here and tell you, let's blow the plug. Um, but as of right now, they're, they're performing.
Through the chairs. What are, what are their, what are their performing?
They provide, they provide the labor um, for the landscaping there.
Because I remember, I, you, this was before you were here, I had sent multiple emails in respect, so I know that. Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, I tapped into the landscaping of the golf course and how horrendous it looks, to be honest with you. And I know that we were waiting because we were gonna get new greens and we wanted to hold off investing into the, into the lush landscaping that we're looking forward to. You know, after the, the green and the sod was laid out. So are they gonna be beautifying the golf course, that part of their job store? Because the last couple of years, it's just been dazing.
To, to, let's speak about the golf course for a second. As you know, the golf course has been doing the, the opening, the. The, some of the uh, tee boxes, uh, some of the fairways are, they're not ready yet. There, it's, it's still very thin, and if, and the fear is that if you open it up, you're gonna have to close it again in the very near future. To properly let it restore. You may end up doing more damage by opening it up now than letting it set for another couple of months. That came as a surprise to me, but it is what it is. In my meetings since that happened the last week or two weeks ago. Um, I've been over there talking about this very issue as far as the detail. Um. And we're taking advantage of this extra time to make sure that we spruce up those details. Because I think that once we do open up, and you can have beautiful, because it is right now, you can have beautiful greens, uh, which they are beautiful. The, you can have a great fairway and the tee box could be perfect. The, the surrounding areas. Pristine shape. The experience overall is not gonna be very, the people are gonna get, and they're gonna go.
I know, I mean, but like you said, we've been giving it for like twenty years, and I, I'm not seeing a wall factor. I mean, we're gonna go ahead, obviously, against those, because we need some sort of something, so we have a thirty-day law, but it's lost, I mean.
Well, they, they maintain what they have there, but if, if we wanted to, at least in the city, that would. If you want to beautify, you have to add. They don't, they don't provide the flowers, they don't provide the, the, the landscaping. They maintain. They won't take the cover grass, they trim the trees, they do all that. A decision needs to be made. We want to buy more flowers, we want to increase landscape, and we want that wall back. That's not what they do. They just maintain what we have up there.
Okay, so if we go and we play a landscape design, or we put flowers and all that stuff, it's already included in this contract, but they wouldn't maintain what we have there?
They would maintain the grounds.
Because we put a palm tree and all, you know, we have a sable palm, we're gonna have to charge you more for that.
They will maintain the grounds.
Uh, through the chair. I'm sorry, I don't know if we're ready to proceed with, with landscaping at this point, especially in the frontal area of the, of the country club. And, I'm sorry, not so big, or in surrounding areas where we, we would typically have off of Curtis, some, some landscaping. I don't know if we're ready for that yet. You were gonna say something.
I have, in my meeting that I had earlier today, I, I said, hey, before we open up here. The entryway into the country club, you know, with, with sign with palm trees, right now, it's just. It's just weed and, and old mulch. Um, I said, this needs to be in tip-top shape. We, I'm just not gonna open up like this. And, and not, and not just there, it's, it's in the surrounding areas as well. And when you're going into hole number one, you look and it's not very welcoming, so. I get, I, I formed up what my expectations are, and we're gonna execute that.
What's gonna help you execute that, like the landscape should have it?
I don't think that this, I wasn't gonna go too crazy with, with, you know, new landscape designs, but we're gonna add flowering plants. Uh, where necessary, um.
No, I know, I just.
And lower level.
What I'm trying to tell you, J C, is because.
And I taught with this.
For a very long time, we seem to just uh. Just pick a couple and just throw them on there and hope that looks great. I want some sort of like, like how uh, Dr. What was the name that came earlier? Um, comparing cities to Coral Gables draw. We wanna keep up with that, that theme, that's right.
Yeah.
I just, I want something that, that um. Has some consistency, some uniformity to it, that it, it looks lush, it looks glossy. You know, it's our country club, and I know that's not. The best country club right now, but if we put a little bit of this, they got it until we got there, because that's in the project. I would like to, to do something like that, not just. You got me?
I, I, I have no problem speaking with the B and A. We should have a landscape architect on, on, on board. Um, and I'm gladly to speak to them. I have already spoken with them because I wanted to come up with a. As far as our citywide, I'm talking about, I want to do a, a like, like a master plan for our entryways and our medians. To, to improve those because. And again, I didn't want to get this today, because I wanted to talk about it in January. I was gonna have agenda, and things that I'd like. To do moving forward, giving kind of like my, my first impression after, after five months, but. I, I have, landscaping is big, it's, it's very big for me, and having a consistent theme of very lush. Um, is what I expect and what I want to move forward. Um, so I will. I will speak to them, or see if we can do some kind of landscape design there, uh, you know, in, in the entryway. And in some other key areas of the golf course. The, the overall. Trees and everything, that's all being trimmed, it's all being cleaned up throughout the regular course, but the ones that people walk into, yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, because we're paying them for these five years, but the landscaping that they're taking care of, and they know landscaping is very easy.
Yeah, it's a lot of trees, it's a lot of trees, it's a lot of tree trimming.
Okay, I'm mentioning something towards the end of voting, because I. Through the chair. Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager, you, you opened this about, to discuss about the golf course. I know you're gonna talk about this later on in your report.
But I was going to, but I'm doing it now.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. I see. That's, and I'm glad, uh. You know, Tommy Hutchins raised this question, and we've all been getting this question. This is a major project. This is a super important entity of the city of Miami Springs that celebrates a hundred years. This year, it was supposed to be a nice ribbon-cutting ceremony, the, the road, Rotary Club's gonna be the first. Group to get in there and do a, a, uh, you know, their, their tournament and the, and, and. We knew, and my understanding was, it, it, it is, it was a major undertaking. And a very expensive, right? But, but expensive needed, I equated it in my mind, as we discussed at that time. That, you know, doing this to golf courses is like, you know, putting in a new roof in the house every twenty years. And, and we were beyond that period, so this is a big deal. I mean, a big freaking deal. To not open the golf course in a timely fashion. Uh, reminds me of that famous line of Ricky Ricardo. You're not explaining to the, you know, people need to know, you know, what happened? Who's responsible? When is it gonna open? Because it's already, we're already into the, kind of the dead season, and then. Um, you know, uh, at first we were told it was gonna open by October, and then it's gonna be November first, and then it's gonna be December sixteen. And uh, Tommy and others have pointed out, people are asking me, and everybody's wondering, because this is a big deal. This is a perennial celebration of this golf court founded by our founder. Curtis Hammond, uh, Glenn, uh, Hammond Curtis. What happened? And, and, and as importantly, what happened is what's going to happen? You know, when, when are we gonna think this is going to open up? Because. It, 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 it was, uh, it not only was gonna make a decision on our part, but it was also in anticipation of. You know, we were gonna put this golf course, you know, at the level, and some other golf courses around the county. And with the closing of the golf course on the June Road, we, this was gonna be a showpiece for us, and right now.
It's not a showpiece.
Not, not, not a showpiece by any stretch of the imagination, but, you know, and who, and who messed up and what's gonna happen.
But kind of, if, if you're trying my name, we're close, we're close, I can tell you that. Um, I was gonna, I was gonna mention as part of my personal, my, part of my comments uh, later. I do want to invite you to go with me on a tour, to get on a golf cart, drive around individually, of course, not, not altogether, but. Uh, the mayor was already with me on Friday.
For two hours, we rode around.
For two hours, we drove around. Um, and, and, yeah, I mean, the course and, and the, the turf, it grows in there by the day. It, it grows, it's. Growing quickly and it's settling, settling in nicely. Uh, like I said, the greens look beautiful. I would like for you guys to go with me and, and visit, because you'll get to see exactly what I'm talking about. Um, and, and we can talk in greater detail at that time.
And I, and I think, J C, also, one of the things we noticed, it was at least two hours that we were driving around a golf cart with Paul and Lori, looking in detail. Is um, not just the, the landscaping, but things like the paths that we need, um. Catching up in some areas where the concrete isn't, uh, is cracked in some areas, um, pressure cleaning of, of, of this. Painting of some of the facilities, it has nothing to do with the turf, the painting, some of the facilities that are out there, the restrooms and stuff, so that there are traffic ones that all open, so. There is a lot of sprucing up to do, um, that will have to be once. This is ready, uh. I can tell you, one of the things that was explained to us, um, is. Nature takes its way too, you know, and, and the decision, and I'm very adamant about that. Where if it's not perfectly ready to take the traffic, we're not opening. Because there's no reason to, you know, for anything. Time passes and later on, you don't remember if it opened this month, as much as. All of us would have liked to open in December, nobody will remember that it opened in December, or we open in, you know, January, February, whenever, what they will remember. And what will be impacted by is that, uh, you know, the improvements that we sought to make, very expensive improvements. Um, were, um, impacted, negatively impacted because we tried to rush it. And I think we discussed some of those examples at other cities where they, um, and my understanding is that Biltmore did that, they were rushed too, so. Um, as hard as it is and as painful as it is for all of us, um. Uh, as J C said, it looks, you know, it's getting better. I, I do encourage you to, you to do an individual tour with him and look at the details so we know. Um, you know, the work that needs to be done. Uh, we're all disappointed that we're not ready, but um. You know, nature also is part of it, and there were several other factors, um. Uh, it shouldn't have happened. Um, or it caught off self, off guard, I think is the main thing, and I asked the, uh, J C to get weekly reports from the golf. Course director now as to where, that we are in progress, so we can all, on a weekly basis, know how it's progressing.
I can say that, seeing the conditions, I believe that December. And November and October was pretty ambitious. Um, this wasn't fresh saw that was laid, this wasn't, um, this was, these, these were springs. They were planted in there and they've had to grow into what you see there right now. And, and so I think, I think it was. Bit ambitious to say, October, especially October. Um, but we, we will get there, we'll get there soon, and, and it's gonna look good.
Through the chair. Yes, sir.
I, I'm completely ready. Chair and manager. Man is. Chair and manager, managers, there is nothing worse than doing a. If you roll out, that's not ready, you know, for the for the big times, that's no question about it. Um, you know, in hindsight, actually now thinking about it, right, this, it may have been ambitious to talk about. If you've done by October first, because it was a major, a major project, but that that is what it is. So folks have heard it and then it's gotten pushed back a couple of times. So I would, and I'm I'm I talked to J C today. Between tomorrow, Wednesday, we get out there and spend some time with him and see it, but uh. We need to uh, we need to come up with a game plan that looks at uh, you know, potential. And this might be done, and based on the work that has to be done. So that folks don't look, it's it's. It it wasn't ready and it's been moved and and uh. And I'm, I have all the confidence in the staff to be able to get this done. But uh, you know, let's not, let's not put another date down.
No.
No, I and I I told. I I I I was talking to staff earlier and I said, I'm gonna need a date, but don't give it to me now, because when I do get it. That's that's the date, it's gonna happen, so I I'm not gonna move it again, so. Um, when I do have a date, I will share it with you. And it'll, it'll be soon, that'll be last.
And hopefully the Rotary Club will. One of the most folks to get in, I had most of what happens.
Okay, let's go to back to this resolution.
Can I, can I make that more clear? Sorry, Mayor, I was waiting.
Go ahead.
Um, uh, J C, uh, as a short term solution, um. Uh, I know the greens and I haven't, I haven't got, we've spoken, but I haven't gone out there to to ride, but. Uh, I know that the the uh, they've opened, they've opened the driving range.
Driving range?
Right, uh, are the putting greens, they don't, they don't look manicured yet, but are the putting greens at the front ready?
Do you mean the the driving green? Those are, those are ready, they just don't have the holes in them and so we haven't allowed people to go on.
So, because I think you had mentioned that, you know, that that area needs to kind of be, could we kind of prioritize like? Uh, getting that area ready to help pull my teeth so that they can, you know, because I think that. Again, that we're still kind of working on it, but if if we can get the the entrance to the country club. Looking nicer, I think that that would help with respect to getting patrons out there and, you know, like maybe renting it out and that kind of thing. If 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 those greens are ready, it would be great if we could get that going so that we could help out the uh.
There's a whole component back there, the short game.
Yeah.
They have like this.
Is the short game area ready?
No, not yet.
Okay, but that's okay, that's not keeping.
But that's like all tied, it's close to where the putting green is, in the back by by hole nineteen. There's another putting green across Curtis. You're approaching hole number one, it's it's a brand new one that that was built. Um, but like I said, the greens are ready.
Right.
Um, just.
Just anything you can do to help the entrance, just to help out the.
Oh, I have a note here, I'm gonna call the N A to move.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we, can we take a vote? Is there a motion?
Vote for the president, Angie.
Okay, is there a second? All right, any discussion, any further discussion? Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo, yes. Councilman Sante?
Yes.
Councilman Behad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasco?
I'm.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes, no motion carried, thank you. We move to uh new business and we have eleven A ordinance screening.
This is an ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, amending chapter one fifty zoning code of the city's voter ordinances. Self date accessory structure and swimming pool regulations, providing for conflict, providing survivability, providing for cot vacation. And providing for effective date, our city planner, Mister Alex David here is here to present on this ordinance, which. Has come about through some permit applications that. Heartburn and so we're here with a solution.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Alex David, Calvin Gere Donald Associates. Um, as part of our charge, you're you're planning a zoning consultants, we do review building permits, all building permits which come through. You know, whether it be for a home addition, shed, or swimming pools and decks. So um, we're doing a lot of swimming pools. And basically, we noticed that there are no real standards or regulations to regulate the setbacks for pools and decks. So um. My feeling is we need to get something in the code to to handle uh that. You know, we have our setbacks for accessory structures, but not the pools themselves. So we need distinct setback regulations for the for those uh two um items, the pools and decks. Um, so basically, um, in your package, um, is exhibit A, attach the ordinance. Which outlines uh what we've done, I mean, we've done a couple of time, a couple of things, not just the setbacks for pools, but. You also, every state law requires safety barriers for pools. So we cleaned up that language and since the state language may change over time, we just thought it was put into. Um, put in that section of Florida statute, so you don't have to amend your code all the time, which sometimes you've lost and forgotten. So we've changed the the that section, deleted some items just to um uh require. Pool safety features to comply with the Florida statute. Um, another thing we noticed, just uh, what was, what is now um new A. Swimming, underground swimming pools were prohibited in the front yard, but not above ground pools, so. Let's keep it simple, all pools are prohibited in the front yard. Uh, that was another change, um, we've also addressed screen enclosures. And have setbacks for those, so what we've done is kind of basically clean up the code. And just create two tables, uh, one dealing with setbacks and for screen and screen enclosures. And one for the swimming pools themselves. So um, and then also the decking around the pool, we we uh, we recommend a a minimum setback of two and a half feet. So that allows drainage around the deck, so, you know, decks flood and they can go to your neighbors or the alleys. That's why we want, uh, we were, you know, are proposing um to have some landscape area around all pool decks. Um, so basically, this is very repetitive um under section forty one, forty two, forty three and forty four, which is or your. Uh, single family zoning districts, we just cleaned up the um language um to um. Basically, do a couple of things. Um, we accepted accepted pools from the regular setbacks and they said we created. Um, pool and deck setbacks in section fourteen of the zoning code. Um, and there was discussion in staff, uh, with staff about allowing an increase in the number of accessory structures. Um, to from two to three, so that was another, some other proposed change. Um, and as I said, it's it's quite repetitive.
Just to, while we were already developing, the accessory structures, what kind of things are we talking about or increasing it from two to three?
Cabanas, existing sheds, um, or um canopies, pergolas, things like that. So there seems to be more looking at uh uh existing housing, when we're looking at plans, we see more than. Uh, two sometimes and they may have been there, you know, twenty, thirty years. So that's why it was a, we in our discussion, we recommended uh uh increasing it from two to three.
So that would still be within the setback of the normal allowed.
Correct.
Setback of.
Yes.
If somebody wanted to do that with that pool.
And someone was bringing up a point that the pools themselves are considered as accessory structure, so you could conceive of, yes. You could conceivably have someone who has a swimming pool and a pergola and they're maxed out if they wanted to add something else.
Do a shed, they can't do a deck, so.
And their edge of your shed.
More flexible.
Yes, and your shed regulations remain the same, there is a cap on the number of sheds that someone can have in their in their yard.
That was what was giving me heartburn, like there's nothing, you know, I was considering a a a pool and accessory structure because it is. But I guess part of the building code has a structure, but should it really be bound by, you know, the ten feet or the five feet uh?
Alex, can you give the example of of the, like one of the cases, we're not naming the property, just the. We had like a series of permit applications that came in that brought this to light and, you know, you have a new planning staff that's looking at this. And then you have contractors in the community who are saying, hey, but wait, this is the way we've always done it, so we needed to have some. Actual regulation in our code that our planning staff can abide by and enforce. So I think it helps with the.
Basically, I interpreted the code very conservatively, so a setback is a setback. So if you're required intensive setback for a shed, why not a pool? I mean, that's basically where your code was. Um, so one example, I was denying a uh a pool and deck because it was a lot of coverage issues and setbacks. Well, we Google Earthed the, you know, the surrounding areas and some of the, one property had the pool deck up to the property line rear and this. Pretty much the sides, so that gave me heartburn, denying someone when the next door neighbor basically had a full backyard of concrete.
To the chair. That property that you mentioned right now that had the pool up to the property line, the deck. Was it recent?
Um.
Last five years?
I didn't really, it it was obviously before we got here and it was built on Google Earth, so it had to be a couple of years old. So, but that that's what I want to see more stringent or more stronger language of the code, so we don't do that.
I know, but it's a no brainer, we're not gonna put a deck to the problem of.
Well, someone did, so.
So something happened there, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, so, and it's a drainage issue, that's where I'm coming to.
Mayor, it's my understanding there was a blind spot in the code that, you know, it didn't speak to to this and now we're.
We're fixing, yeah.
We're solving, we're fixing that, yeah, so, and I know I I know that it went through several iterations with with the staff, so I'm.
Let me continue, go ahead, we interrupted you, I just wanted to know that.
Oh, no, that's basically it, I'm I'm requesting approval, uh, uh, for, you know, for a first reading. Um, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a vote, please. Vice Mayor Bravo? Yes. Councilman Sante?
Yes.
Councilman Behad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasco?
I'm.
Mayor Mitchell? Yes, the motion carried.
Thank you.
Alex, thank you, and Martin.
Don't go hard.
No, no, with Heidi and. Oh, and Sylvia, working on this and, you know, and identifying these, like you said, these um, this kind of holes that we have. That it, and I wanna, um, you know, excuse me, I took something because my throat. So I have a laryngitis. Um, but I wanna reiterate something that I've said before, we've got a hundred year old city. Things have been done in a hundred years, in the twenties, in the thirties, forties, fifties, sixties, even the seventies and eighties. That, you know, were how you did things and and when you have an older city like this. Um, it's my understanding, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed because, you know, a newer city. That is only twenty years old or so is a little more consistent in how their codes are and all, because they're pretty recent, so. Um, we're always going to have these issues come up from time to time and and addressing them, you know, when you see them. Um, we greatly appreciate your professional expertise and guidance on this. Um, Sylvia?
Yeah, I'll say next, twelve B.
Okay. Um, so we move to, did you wanna speak on?
This is a discussion item, uh, so.
Can I introduce?
Yes, I think that's that's the process, the proper process.
Oh, okay, so we are in twelve A, I thought you wanted to, well, just a second, I thought you wanted to speak on something about Alex with the swimming pools.
No, 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 I'm 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 with him, we worked on it together, we're in full agreement, um, as you said, was a blind spot. And there's kind of two schools. Uh, one that says that when something isn't mentioned in the code, then you allow it and just kind of let it happen any way that it can. And the other one, which is our school, which says if it is not mentioned in the code, typically that's gonna be considered prohibited. And so we didn't want to go that way.
Move.
Um, and say swimming pools are not mentioned anywhere.
Those are two extremes, like one eighty degrees.
But um, we we just knew that um, a swimming pool is an accessory. And if it is an accessory, therefore the accessory structure setbacks would, um, in the absence of separate setbacks would apply. But those are too um, too rigid for a swimming pool, there there were honors for most people, so, you know, this has been, hopefully both accidents. Anyway, no, I'm.
Well, thank you so much, all right, so now we'll move to twelve B and it's a request by Councilman Behad.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, so uh, it just uh, I I had staff put this on the agenda just because I wanted to to get an update from C G A. We've got the, you know, the budget process was was lengthy and we got it behind us of the the lease contract. And I just wanted to make sure since we only had uh one meeting last month and one this month, I wanna hit the ground running in January. So I dusted off the document that C G A gave us, we budgeted uh quite a bit of money. Uh, for these projects. And uh, when we last spoke with Sylvia, uh, she had uh given us this document that color coded by priority. Things that are uh red or strategically significant and urgent. And then there are things that are urgent, but not necessarily strategically significant, but they have to be done because there's urgency. And then things that are strategically significant, uh, but not necessarily urgent. So it's color quoted for us, uh, everything that was color quoted is what was included in the. Uh, hundred and forty thousand some odd dollars that that we budgeted for this year for these things to get done. Uh, but I wanted to just get an update from Sylvia, uh, because I feel like uh the things that were. Uh, that were of the highest priority and urgency was uh the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street Business Corridor. Uh, because I I just wanna remind everybody that uh the. Business and Economic Development Task Force worked a little over a year, almost a year and a half. Um, their first meeting was in September twenty twenty one. Uh, then we had the recommendations workshop uh over at the uh Senior Center in February. Uh, and we had a whole list of recommendations uh about Northwest Thirty Sixth Street in particular. Uh, I know that uh Councilman Sante served on on that task force. Uh, and uh, under the leadership of uh of Mark Crowbridge and 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 others. And so I just wanted to make sure, I've been kind of pushing this, uh, you know, which is one of the reasons that. I I I pushed for us to to have this special project, uh, but into the, or at least we posed to have in the budget. Uh, but I'd like an an update on timing, because I think uh, we've we've come a long way in terms of things that we need to do. In terms of Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, I also wanna point out one last thing. If uh, you guys may not have this document in front of you, but it was given to us for for each one of these things. So like on red was urgent and strategically important. Uh, in terms of the general scope of what we're paying for. Uh, there's research and analysis, uh, there's a council workshops, uh, community engagement, required public review of meetings. A lot, a lot of the things that uh, a lot of the things that we discussed uh in that presentation earlier. Uh, you know, obviously the importance of getting consensus about things, I think we've we've done a lot. We've got a task force that gave a bunch of recommendations, there's reviewed by staff, now we have people, C G A, they are uh. Obviously, experts in comprehensive planning and urban planning and zoning and land use reg- regulation. I think that everything is in place for us to move forward, I really, really, really would like for us to get started on this when we uh. When we come back uh in January, so I, that's the reason I put this on the agenda, because I wanted to get an up uh an update in terms of. Status and timing and.
Right. So um, this list that we put together, uh, what was that? August, uh, presented to you, I think, uh, first then, and then we modified it, brought it back in September. Um, I think we probably have by now a much better sense of where these things can go or how they can happen. Uh, now that we've been aboard for a few months and um have a a better sense of what is going on. Um, and what is not going on. Um, and so I I don't think I would necessarily change my recommendation with respect to where these things fall, these these. This assessment came from everything that I've heard from you with respect to what you think and how you think these things are important. And also from my own observation, um, and um, you know, I I still think that. Um, and, um, you know, I I still think that that. This assessment is correct to the extent that, you know, some things are urgent. But perhaps not strategic and some are strategic but perhaps not urgent and some are urgent and strategic, which is what this reflects. Um, so, um, we know that the comprehensive planning area based amendments are due. Um, August first, and that has to happen because state requires it, so, you know, whether we like it or not, that that has to be done. Uh, but, you know, this may be a relatively minor effort this time because you all went through a process not very long ago, which actually. We were a little confused, you know, we thought, okay, we're, why do we have to do it again now? But apparently that was to fulfill the prior cycle, which the city was behind on. So, um, I actually have a call into, um, what is now Flora Commerce, used to be CEO. At the the state to, uh, get a better, um, sense of, uh, what they expect from us this time. Uh, but I hope that this is not gonna be a very complicated effort yet. Uh, the timing is good because if there are things that are vision related. Uh, we can put policies in there to reflect those that have to do with some of these other projects. Uh, now, uh, with respect to Northwest Thirty Sixth Quarter, um, I think that, you know, we we came in here with this idea. With this understanding. Uh, that i- it, there's an urgency to it and, you know, I, we believe that that's the case, but now that I've I've been working. Um, with property owners for a few months. I see that there are some things that are happening that are positive there. Uh, there are some development projects that are coming that we are, we're gonna be able to move forward. Um. Uh, I had a conversation, uh, with, uh, Councilman, uh, I had about, uh, the uses and, you know. Um, I think that there's not necessarily a use that is inherently. Good or bad, but it has to do with the quality of development, the quality of the environment. That you promote through, uh, the incentives, through the requirements that you put in place. And, you know, the kind of context that you want to create, the kind of place that you want to create. So, uh, we know that. In terms of, uh, what we want to do in any of these districts, we do have. One significant challenge in that is that you have some things in your charter. That are limited, right, to potentially to certain things that might, you know, might 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 want to be, uh, done. And so, um, I think that in order to move some things forward, we need to make decisions about what's gonna happen with that, you know. Um, Ms. Sarah can. Can shed some light on that as well, better than I can probably. Uh, and that, you know, would be something that would go to impact probably. Any plan that we do for the Abraham District and any plan that we do different than what we have in place for Northwest Thirty Sixth as well. Um. Depending on, you know, which way we go with either of them. Um. But, um. I I am a little more encouraged about the Northwest Thirty Sixth District, knowing some things that I know about projects that are in the pipeline. Um, and, uh, on the other hand. Uh, when we started, I wasn't as aware of the Abraham Track District, as I'm sure that there are many people in the city. That don't know also about that area, but there's so much happening now, there's so much synergy happening around. The areas around me. That it does create a very significant strategic opportunity for the city. Is it urgent? Perhaps not as much. But certainly is not an opportunity that the city should let. Flip by and lose it to potentially other parts. Uh, nearby, that could then take advantage of it to your detriment, right, you have, you have land there that could certainly. Um, benefit perhaps from. Having more happen that is envisioned in your code today, because I, you know, when I look at what was put in place for that. For that district, it seems to me that it was done with a brush stroke of, well, let's look at what's around it, there's not much there, so it's gonna probably be the same. You know, and now we know there could be much more. And so I think that there's a great opportunity for that. Um. So, uh, those are really the two key projects. Um, the ER based amendments, they have to happen, the zoning code cleanup is happening already, each mail, but, you know, I think we're gonna tackle. More of that, we're coming back to you in January as we committed to JC with, um, you know, some recommendations for the remainder of your Gateway District. Um, and those, uh, maybe, you know, some of them may be significant, uh, for changes. Uh, but, you know, I think that we're going to take a more holistic approach to the code, uh, starting in January as well, now. Can we do all of this at the same time? Um, probably not, and I probably would not recommend that we do it because these projects involve. Uh, engagement of the community. And we don't want to create a lot of confusion about, you know, why are we having, you know, three meetings, some different things, and people don't have time to devote to so much. Of that, um, I I don't think so, um. I I I think I am comfortable with my recommendation, but it really is up to you. Where you want to start and I would love to get your input and get, uh, direction from you and.
Sure.
You know, sir.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, I'm very encouraged. And and as I'm listening to you, like, in my brain is going priorities, right, it is great, but what comes first, you know, you put the shoe on, right? Um, so I'm encouraged and I am referred to comments that, uh, Councilman Behad, I think, in the opening. Regarding. The work that the Business and Economic, you know, the Task Force did. And so I would see a priority, I would like to see you all bump up the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. Uh, project a little bit more because of all of that work that went into it. That's two years worth of work and conversations here. And now with, now that you've had some more time to look at and even hear about things maybe I haven't heard about. I'd just like to see that, you know, upon the top three, um, priorities, you know, beginning in January, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, sir, clarity.
The chair, uh, well, my recommendation is honestly the Abraham Track would be the priority. Uh, that we have the largest landowner, owns twenty six acres. Doesn't need to assemble anything. You basically can go start promoting it, developing it. Getting it out there, which will obviously spearhead. A lot of more interest of what we're getting to do on Thirty Sixth Street, just there's Thirty Sixth Street is just not a broad stroke. You can just say this is gonna happen in every single corner, it takes really good planning to do it right. Uh, maybe even districts, now seems like a like a dirty word, we just say overly district, we use the town center, but, you know. Maybe east of East Drive and so forth, right, so it takes a lot more planning, I think there's, I think the Abraham Track, you pretty much could say. Everything goes. Is an area like you said, nobody even knows it's our city. And the hot art areas you just mentioned, Parker Lake, just south of that. It's the hottest market right now, it's just not gonna stop because of all the stuff that we talk about, Intramodul, Freedom Park. Uh. The entrance to the airport, like just location, location, location all over the place. So why miss out on opportunities, like you mentioned, there's still a lot of land south of that. Where other projects will get started and yet. Pocket that has the most land will not. Get interest, it'll get interest, but by the time they get interest, maybe at that point money run out or. Opportunities, they won't next year, it'll be a couple more years from now, I just think immediately, I don't think, I'm not saying your work, uh, town grid your work, but I think. It'll be easier to develop and zoning Abraham Track. Than it will be on Thirty Sixth Street, so because it will be easier in the sense of, you could pretty much put that part there and say, a lot of things goes. You can do that first and then that'll spearhead. A lot of other work that we do on Thirty Sixth Street, so, I wouldn't say simultaneously, but.
Yeah.
I just think.
Me too. Um, there's, there's two, I'm sorry, just let me say, uh, Councilman, a Councilman, um. That, uh, there's, there's two factors that I probably should have mentioned, one, uh, respect to Northwest Thirty Sixth, I think it's. Interesting the agenda that you have today, because you've had a lot of items on your agenda that are sort of all synergistic. With respect to these projects. Right, and and one factor that to us is still a little bit of an unknown. Is the FDOT project and what impact that really is going to have, like, I mean, you know, they're they're sort of showing us these graphics, but, you know, we don't know. Whether that's exactly where they're gonna land or how we're gonna make. These changes operational to the benefit of the city or to the detriment of the city, and it could be to the detriment of this quarter further, and. That would really, really change. Um. The approach. That we take, right, it's it's in some, in some, uh, ways, it would, um. It would almost require. For those blocks that you were pointing out. Like almost turning its back onto Northwest Thirty Sixth. This, right? So, um, to me, that is a factor of uncertainty with respect to that, I'm not saying that we cannot plan. Yet for it. Uh, but it makes me a little nervous to do a plan then not know, and of course, you know, the PDNE is gonna take a while, so that's. Uh, that's unfortunate for us. Um. The other thing I was just gonna mention is with respect to the Abraham Track District is, you know, we're not necessarily starting from scratch because there are. Um, uh, studies, so sure that the county did for that whole area that gives us a starting point. Uh, of course, this was before the stadium and all this, you know, uh, new hub of activity. Uh, but we do have at least, you know, something to kind of, you know, give us a a starting point. So I just wanted to point that out, I'm sorry, um, to your question now.
Um, no, you pointed out something I was gonna point out with EPTO, I just, I don't know if this is a race between us and the county, cause if they start. Laying out their map of what they wanna do, we may be confined to, it it's pressing back our options and and limiting us, like you said just now. Of potential things that we need, we might want to see on that side of town. So for me, the Abraham Track, for me was, is, it's more of a cleaner canvas per se, cause you don't have residential, you don't have, pretty much, you don't have any buildings. But I think the turnover there would kind of set the tone. Coming into our city from Abraham Track to start coming into the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street Corridor. Also with the Abraham Track, if we do change the charter or or the ordinance or and everything that we're discussing. That would also help us with our tax base, which is where we're lacking a lot on Thirty Sixth Street. Our mayor has fought numerous times about the bed tax, and right now we just have to be smart and and go around that, I don't want that. That land that we have that has so much potential to actually like counter effect because we're gonna be waiting out on their plan, if anything, I think that they need to plan around us. Cause we do have plans and they can always plan, I mean, they're always consistently planning around cities to begin with, so. I am just trying to beat the bull to the race.
Yes.
Because I'm scared that. I'm scared that if they go ahead and they implement certain limitations, the county will, I don't know how. How they can override us in any way where we can't make certain changes to to. To our zoning or or provide any restrictions, I'm just, I don't know how that technicality works. Let's say we want, you know, I know, I know that there's height restrictions in maybe the Abraham Track area. Um, to the airport, but I don't know if I'm gonna have other restrictions due to what it is that they wanna implement. So we have something in writing in the game before they do, I I think that makes it a little bit difficult for for them to, uh. Misconstrue our our visions of the city.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, I mean, obviously Thirty Sixth Street and the Abraham Track for me are our top priorities, but I would like to work, I think Abraham Track would be an easier canvas to work with. Um, coming into, the Thirty Sixth Street is gonna be a low fall.
Okay.
My opinion.
Yeah.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I. Uh, Thirty Sixth Street is a priority, first, first of all, we've already. You talk to anybody who lives on that side of town, everything. Uh, you've got. Blighted areas, there's all kinds of work that needs to be done over there, there's all kinds of work that's already been done, we already have developers that are there. That are looking to that that own, that are looking how to see how they develop. I mean, that is. The the, you've got. There's all kinds of things that need to happen there, right, uh, we we need to, we need to think of what the property maintenance standards are. On Thirty Sixth Street, we've got, we've got an empty lot. Next to the BKS building that's being used for truck parking, it's not even paved, it's on brass. Uh, there's, there's a, Dr. Murray was here talking about, that's our gateway. That's our outward facing boundary, it's supposed to, uh, by his words, reflect the character of our city. Like, that's not what we have there, everybody's frustrated with the crime, everybody's frustrated with the blighted, dilapidated. Uh, you know, areas that that are are promoting the crime that we see, I I feel like it was. It. I understand that the Abraham Track is available, I I disagree, I don't, I don't think that. That what we do there is gonna dictate what all the surrounding, uh, landowners are gonna do. Uh, I, it it's my understanding that. You know, several years ago, we met at that, at that time with with the the city member, Anthony Abraham, I think that, I think that there are some things that we could do. Uh, that that would involve like, uh, approaching maybe the Abraham Corporation, the the surrounding landowners. To see what they were, they were going to do so that we can kind of dovetail. Uh, uh, what we do, but I. Think that if you ask the average person on the streets of the city of Miami Springs, they would tell you, you gotta do something about Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, we've been talking about it. And talking about it and talking about it, we had, uh, we had a task force convene, they had all kinds of recommendations, the city accepted those recommendations, it was really the impetus. For us getting CGA to come on on board, uh, it's, there are things. I I read through the recommendations, there are things that are limiting us, uh, needlessly. Uh, I I feel like that's low hanging fruit, cause there's things that we need to do and I think that we need to get. Again, that's the entrance to our city, uh, and right now, I I think that people don't feel comfortable with. Uh, how it reflects, uh, on our city.
The chair.
I would prioritize that first.
The chair. I agree with you, Walter, uh, Councilman Walter, but, uh, wholeheartedly, is there any way, cause Thirty Sixth Street for me is very important as well. I would like to, I mean, ideally in an ideal world, to congruently and aggressively do both. At the same time, cause I think they both go hand in hand. They're, they're both top priority, so I mean, if we're gonna tackle, I mean, that's a giant and Thirty Sixth Street is a giant, is there any way possible? That we can congruently work on this together?
Let me get back on that question. I just wanted to piggyback on, by the way. Which went to the point that I was making about one or two. Three priorities, which is really, you know, you all have a good sense of our our ideas. And and it's not, I mean, it's not the chicken or the egg, and how can we divide this up? In a way that timely. Resource wise. And ultimate goal, you know, achievable. Goals in the immediate, short term and whatever, um, I agree that Abraham Track is our sandbox. A lot of things we could do there, we've got some things that are kind of ready or almost ready to go. And and I would just ask you to balance those priorities. Because I think this, this has to happen, it's significant.
Can I ask a question?
Or, wait, before you respond, so that we can keep the conversation going, but I just wanna provide some background.
Yes.
Um, and I agree, Abraham Track is, uh. If I have to pick between the two, I think Abraham Track is right. For changes right now and we need to, we ignored that for way too long, it's just, you know, it's Abraham Track, Abraham Track. And if ever there's been a moment to focus on that area, it's right now. Um, we had a meeting, uh, JC and I had a meeting and I told the council. A month, two months ago with all the hotels, we invited all hotel owners and managers, and that's one of the things we talked about, about Freedom Park. Freedom Park is an opportunity for these hotels to up. Their, you know, clientele, their occupancy, their vision of they're the the closest hotels to Freedom Park. Um, you know, they don't, you could stay somewhere else, but you'd have to drive in traffic back and forth to get to and from, so, um, for the most part, and we, and we had good turnout at that, they're very interested. Um, we have a meeting, JC and I have a meeting with the Airport Director. I think at the end of this month, sometime at the end of this month, or middle of this month, if not in January. To find out about the plans with the airport, because the airport, not just, we've been talking about the cargo area, but the airport has major plans to expand. Miami International Airport, which is going to impact us, and that impacts. The. The Abraham Track also, and of course Northwest. Um, we also, um, have requested a meeting with the, um, Freedom Park. Group that's building that because we need to know what their plans are and that's gonna impact our city and, um, uh. You know, what, we know they're gonna build something there, but in reality, what are exactly the plans? You know, that are, that that they have right now and how that's going to impact our city. You know, that are that that they have right now and how that's going to impact our city, and impact it positively negatively. So we can discuss that. So there's a whole bunch of things here happening. Um but. As Sylvia said. It came to you right now with the Abraham Track, that even though this has always been on the back burner for us, and yeah, it's the Abraham Track and Abraham Track. Um I don't wanna be sleepy. At this moment, because. In five years, in a few years, that may, you know, it it might be like the Marlins Stadium where, you know, all the intentions on there, and then, you know, the area just kind of settles down. So um. I I think. It's really important that we realize that timing is critical for everything. And the other thing is. As uh the Vice Mayor said, ideally, I don't see how we can separate one from the other. Um they're both our business district and they should be at the same time. The um one of the reasons that I'm so hard on Eftat saying they need to rectify the damage that they've done. Of, you know, you get to the end of North South World Point Ciana and our city ends there, except it doesn't. But unless you know that, you would think our city ends there, because there's a great big overpass and you have to go all around. Um the Abraham Track should be the continuance, you know, from South World Point Ciana, we should be able to get, and we used to. On South River Drive and continue to the rest of our city, which is a huge portion of our three square mile city. So um ideally. Uh we need to have the vision of looking. At both areas and perhaps concentrate on one a little more than the other right now, um if it can all be done, but not. Looking at it in two different areas. There.
No, no, for certain, they're 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 not disconnected, but they're 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 different. Uh but they're not disconnected. Um I I just need from a. From a practical standpoint to. To just. Kind of say that, you know, we need to take into consideration the fact that. If I just went into my office and wrote these ordinances, we, you know, between Alex and me, we probably could have them to you in two months. But that's not what this process is about, right? This is about community and vision and aspiration. And so um it's just, you know, the the ordinance is sort of the final product, but we have to go through a process where we decide. You know, who who we want to be and what we want these districts to be as a community. And so that is a process that takes up the most effort and the most time. And we need to give it its time, because. Um we can, I mean, I I can tell you from experience in working with Heidi also in other communities, you know. Um the community engagement piece is the one that is um often the 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 least predictable. We can plan for, we can say we're gonna have three meetings in 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 two months. And um and we're lucky, you know, we would not, we will not have any inconvenience. Uh or any uh obstacles to that process, the way that we planned it. But most of the time when people are involved, we need to calibrate our processes to go, because if we don't get. Enough people to show up, or if people are um upset about things, we have to give them the time to. You know, to tell us what they think and for us to listen and to process, even if sometimes those things are not necessarily relevant. To what we're trying to do. There's gonna be a place to park those concerns and to channel them in the right. Directions, even if it is to say, well, thank you for your, you know, concern about mailboxes, but we're going to direct that to this. Like what we listen. So um. My 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 major concern is not necessarily with what we do at the end and what product we give you. Uh what strategy we bring back to you, but with the process itself, because that takes. Uh most of the. Effort. In this. And I I wanna make sure that we do it right for both of them. It is true that if we. If we focus on um. The Abraham Track. District, whether it is at the beginning or later, we're probably gonna have. Interest, but perhaps not opposition. Because again, I think, I I may be wrong. Um but you know, I I think that uh most people are, you know, as as as. You said, it's been sort of in the back burner, people are not really thinking about it much. It's sort of there, but it's separate, it's isolated, it's like an island. On its own, um you know, circumstantially. Uh but it can, it can stand alone as, you know. Something that is emblematic of the city. Uh but it's a very different kind of district from anything else that you have in this city. Uh pattern wise, uh character. Scale, density even, you know, it can be very, very different. Um and so, you know, there's, there's um. There is that blank slate that you all talked about, that would allow us to do a lot more there. With the Northwest Thirty Six, there's a lot of. Some baggage that goes with it, because people have been. Um suffering from, you know, the consequences of the replying of the corridor and, you know, having to see it and. Live with it. And so I think that that is going to, from my perspective, require a little bit more care and attention in that public engagement process, perhaps. I am very interested in the meetings that you mentioned, Mayor, because I think that would be great if perhaps we could integrate. Some of those stakeholders into the actual process, have them come. And make presentations as part of our engagement process to, you know, sort of, okay, here's the Abraham Chris, why are we doing this now? Well, because this is happening, and this is a great opportunity. And why are we doing it now for the Northwest? Because the hotels also have a great opportunity. It's. It's an incentive to invest in those properties. That perhaps did not exist before, right? And so. Uh that's one of my stakeholders that would be great to bring, and there are others like those, you know, that we talked about, that would be. Uh wonderful. I do wanna make sure that when we um. When we work with this Northwest Thirty Sixth uh Street Quarter, that we um involve. The stakeholders from that area very significantly in 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 shaking this vision and telling us what. You know, what they think. We translate that into actual solutions. Um I was just talking to Ned outside. Ned is an old friend of mine. We've worked together before, and I've known him for a long time, and, you know, he told me. You can call me anytime. And I'll I'll work with you, so. Yes. That's true, that's true, I apologize. Um so um, you know, um we we have, we have enough resource, he's he's very interested. He he thinks it's, this is a a great city and. And and so, you know, my idea was to bring someone with a background in market and economics and economic development. And it could be somebody like him. Uh rather than somebody who I had in mind, so, you know, um just wanted to mention that, because. You know, I I was thinking, they're sitting. Uh looking at the agenda, wow, this this is like, you know, it's. That you have all these things on the agenda tonight, so. Um anyway, we will go in any direction that you want. I wanna make sure that we can. Um you know, uh that that we we have the bandwidth to do. All of these. Things right, that we give them the proper attention. Um. And um. Perhaps if we started with a common element, which could be something like, you know. Um. That sort of series of. Informational or education meetings that I'm thinking that perhaps these stakeholders could help us put together. Um we could do that as a common element for both. Um both projects. Um. And go from there, and and then, you know, maybe they separate a little bit, and we work on one. Then we work on the other. Um I think that um. I think that maybe Northwest Thirty Six could be done. Uh sooner. And um, you know, we're we're talking about these projects being done within the next year. So it's not like we're going to put it off for another year. I mean, this budget is for this fiscal year, and so. If we started in January with, you know, sort of like, I don't know, we could put uh like a like a roundtable series. You know, to sort of kick it off. Um it it would take a little bit of time to organize, because we would need the players at the table and sort of talk to them about, you know. Uh coming and doing, you know, a series of presentations, maybe it could be done sort of over, you know, organized in a way where where it could be done over. Couple of days, you know, we could do, you know, morning session, afternoon session, something like that, and sort of divide the public. Uh as as the kickoff. For all of.
Yeah, talking about.
Just kind of throwing ideas.
That's why.
Yeah.
And we can spray for all, and that's why I wanted to mention these things to get everyone thinking, you know, because. What I think is, any expansion that the airport's doing, particularly on this end, you know, we already know. It needs to involve us.
Yes.
Needs to involve us to our benefit, in the sense that we benefit them, they benefit us, you know, it's not just, it doesn't impact us, no. You know, how can we benefit from that? You know, how can we could. Work with them to get a better quality product for all of us, you know, we're. And the same thing with Freedom Park.
We need to understand from the airport, you know, what they're going to do, so that when we work on the Northwest Thirty Six. Street quarter solutions, we know if we can be synergistic with the airport or not. Right? Because that's going to influence. What types of uses, you know, we talked about whether residential is a factor. Or whether hotel is still a factor and what the airport is going to do. And how they're gonna treat that edge is going to make a huge difference.
And with Freedom Park, we're the closest municipality to Freedom Park, so we have everything to offer. Um for, you know, for. What that needs, you know, cuz obviously it's there for a softer stadium, but you know, that's just, that's the stadium. It needs a lot of support, services, and um we can provide those, you know, with the community, with restaurants, you know, to visit our. City and. Um and perhaps um in that whole quarter of Abraham Track. Providing these other things that we can't even think of, but they anticipate this would be nice to have here in structure, so. There's so many opportunities here, and in fact, when we do have a meeting. The airport one is is set, I believe, the the one Freedom Park we requested. Um you know, um perhaps. Uh we can have you or um Alex. Attend also to to get that idea, the vision. Um. But when you're saying stakeholders, these meetings with stakeholders, who are you referring to?
I am referring to anyone who has. An impact or an influence in what's going to happen and. Some sense of a vision of what will happen. Not necessarily on property that is within city boundaries, but around it. Because of the extreme.
Okay, so you're talking about.
Right, yes. I mean, the airport, the airport owns land.
Yes.
And in this district, you know, they own land within this district. Uh Freedom Park would be great. They're not a direct stakeholder, but obviously they're gonna have a huge impact on the entire surrounding area. Including the city. So um you know, they they could be one of the hotels, property owners from the hotels are stakeholders, the residents, obviously. The businesses that are not hotels, but that are in either in these quarters or elsewhere in the city. Um so yes, we need to involve everyone, you know.
Good chair, um just to kind of. Backtrack to what I initially said from the beginning, uh. Considering that we already know the master plan or by uh the airport in that whole area. In other words, they're gonna give us guidance what Abraham kind of needs to look like, right? Pretty much.
What what they would like to see, but you know, I think that city has an opportunity to establish its own vision.
Fair enough, but that will give you kind of a landscape to kind of figure how. We want the rest of it. But I just think that, I'm concerned I have, believe it or not, and contrary to uh. Councilman, but yet, we have not. Spoken to. The landlord in there, in that area, for twenty years has been neglected. We could have taken care of things from before. It has not been done. So this is just now considering how. How attractive that whole area is to just kind of just. You know, kind of put it in the back burner, when it's probably the least resistant right now. Even from designing, from from creating the zoning, you just mentioned to me that basically go. Pretty much get what has already been established from other zoning adjacent to that. And thirty six street. You know, like I said, it's hard to just say, well. Forget about, no, we're not forgetting about thirty six street, such an important part, but I just feel like that's gonna set the tone. For the for thirty six street.
And I want to add something. While you were saying this, something I thought that, uh thought that came to me while you were talking is, um that was brought up by one of our residents. By Mr. Uh Lupe, Lupe. Um the Intermodal Center, which connects you with basically anywhere in the county, is adjacent to. The Abraham Track, our location of the Abraham Track, you can walk there, so that's something else of another opportunity of. Uh what Councilman asked was, which we're saying, um I can't remember. Uh referred to. That I said our location is one of them, our uh competitive advantages, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we need to look at, you know, these these competitive advantages in assets. Um that, you know, may maybe um. May not be realized at this point. You do have adjacency to the MIC. But you don't have a direct connection, you don't have a way to easily get there. Uh except there, at the Abraham Track, but you know, that would have to be established, you know, that 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 ability to connect. Uh from from there and also from the rest of the city, right? So you know, what are the things that you would have to do in order to. Connect its residents. To, it struck me the that that comment, because it is true. I mean, it's right there, it's right there, so how do you get your residents? To be able to take advantage of that, you know? It's it's not every community that has the ability. I have to take the train from South Miami to get to the MIC. You know, it takes a while. But. You have it right there, so um I think it is uh. Is yet another, another factor that we strongly are taking note of and considering, you know, not just for the Abraham Track, but. You know, as as an asset for uh for the city.
Sylvia, what would you suggest? For me, you've heard all of our comments, and we've heard each other, which is, you know, something that I think is a great value for us to kind of be able to talk. Here's a but. From each of us, um. Going for it, I think pretty much that the EAR, you say, has to be done.
Yeah. Unless I hear otherwise from from.
So that would be a a something that's gonna be done. We'll have to do that.
Yeah.
And then, um where do you suggest we go from here directing you?
Right, well.
Between the Abraham Track and I guess um gathering that are, you know, interest right now is Abraham Track and the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street.
There there's so much more on our list. I am a little flattered uh as to give you an answer right now, because I was hoping to get, you know, direction for, you know, like one or the other. And not like we need to do them both at the same time, um yeah.
That, what what do you? What's the time you mean by on? Because I get, I get the sense, cuz you've already said a couple of times, that this is the kind of process that.
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking it's gonna be about.
Processes at the same time.
Potentially since once each, yeah, that's that's kind of what I'm thinking.
You agree?
I I agree, um having just gone through this in another community where they were. Evaluating various sections of their code and different zoning districts with different needs. Within a very small area, but each with different needs. Um you know, one process we started. Internally, I think last December, and the ordinance was ultimately adopted in. September. Because you have that. Public engagement process. And you're getting the feedback from the community and your interested stakeholders, whether they be future developers or your existing residents. They are going to give you feedback, which is going to cause you to perhaps change your perspective. Or and and have us change.
Us and yourselves, yeah.
So it's, it is, this is not a process, I know that you are all very eager to get this done. But in order to get it done. Well. It's gonna have to take time.
And I I do want to um manage expectations on your part, because I'm telling you. You know, that our plan would be to do each one of these in about six months, and whether they happen, they overlap, or they happen sort of simultaneously. You know that our plan would be to do each one of these in about six months, and whether they happen, they overlap, or they happen sort of simultaneously, you know. It did actually maybe a little longer. But the truth is that if we encounter the need for more. Engagement with the public, you should really let that happen. Because otherwise, you're not gonna get the product that you want, and there may be, you know. Not the kind of buying that you need uh as well, and so um I really urge you to kind of. Keep that in the back of your mind, you know, when I say six months, it could end up being eight, it could end up being nine. Um, I'm hoping that that's not the case, but you know. Wherever people are involved.
Sylvia Sylvia made a good point, we could do this in a vacuum. And have an ordinance turned out and sitting in front of.
Like the swimming pool.
Yeah. But that, the swimming pools is a is a very targeted thing, um, and it doesn't involve all of these planning things of how you want. An entire gateway to your community to look like, so could could there conceivably be an ordinance and sitting in front of you at your March meeting? If we did it in a vacuum, sure. Is that going to pass muster with you and the public? I don't know that that's the case. Um, and I think to Councilman, I know. He embraced a few times the the task force and the recommendations that they made, and I don't know if Sylvia and Alex have had an opportunity to look at. Their recommendations, some of their recommendations are things that, um. We could probably bring in a. Quick ordinance that is something that we could do, um, and I don't know, I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Sylvia about it. If we could perhaps address those so that we've taken care of the recommendations that the task force has given. And then. As part of the rest of the process, then do the holistic view from a planning perspective. Um, because that task force didn't have the benefit of having someone like Sylvia and Alex uh guiding them through that process. So I I understand the competing interests of wanting to get action on on the task force's recommendations, so. Um, that might be something else to inject, like an ordinance with the task force's recommendations. But those may later prove to be.
Yeah, I don't I don't think it's a good idea to piece.
Right, and so. That, I think that's why I I understand the the desire for action, we really do, and I think. Miami Springs is in a in a in a very unique moment in time where all of these things are happening around it. And you're, you know, gonna shine as well. Um, but in order to do that, you're really gonna have to take that engagement.
So. Well, let me, Sylvia, you had mentioned, and I tend to, um. You had mentioned that our Northwest Thirty-Six Street, that certain things are happening, the city building, the Realtors Headquarters, which is a really nice building, it's going on very nicely in progress. Uh they're, you know, gonna be completing it in a timely manner. Um. And so that will change, I think you're saying, I I believe so too, it will should kind of change the essence of that area.
It will change that, yes.
And and perhaps encourage other.
We also have. At least two other opportunities that are the pipeline, right, uh you will approve the final plan for the O V I. Our building, that is, that building is already approved, and so, you know, uh hopefully. It'll move soon, and we also have a a new um. Um, hotel that is going on the um on the side opposite the uh Wyndham Garden. Uh they're moving forward with plans with Northwest Thirty, uh no, the Thirty-Six, a very nice building. Uh from what I have seen so far, and um as soon as they uh submit their application, which I believe is very close. We'll put it through the process and come for you, uh and you know, we are um. Uh ready to um to take a. A more meticulous approach to reviewing your site plans and putting in place conditions that, you know, give you the kind of development that you want. Um, but you know, with that said, from that perspective, perhaps we can, you know. Look at the Northwest Thirty-Six sooner, so that we couldn't, since there's development already happening. That we put in place the kinds of uh the the framework for the kind of development that we actually wanna see. You know, the same way that we're doing with the gateway now, so we're looking at it very critically, you know, do we have the framework to get us where we wanna go? Uh, we we kind of know what we want, but is this gonna get us there, right, what we have in place, and so. We we might be able to do that with Northwest Thirty-Six, I'm not saying that we wouldn't, you know, kind of start looking at the Abraham Track, but perhaps we're looking at it. We're looking at these two things at a different scale, you know, um, I do believe that both of them. Have to have robust public engagement, um, but again, you know. Uh, I I don't wanna commit to anything without really thinking it through, but you know, I am kind of attracted to this idea of maybe. Being able to kick off. The process for all of it. With a set of common common activities that says, okay, here we come, you know, and. Here's a learning opportunity about everything that's happening around us that we need to be thinking about and that is gonna influence what we do. And that's the airport, that's Freedom Park, that's even D O T, you know, we could invite them to do these presentations in a different context that is not just directed to the council. And uh I don't know if they're gonna wanna do it, you know, I mean, they do these workshops of of often, you know, with the public. But you know, this might be a little different, we could do it like a like an event, you know. Uh and have these people present it, so do it as like an open house type of thing, you know. So this would require a little bit of planning and a lot of coordination because you would have to. Get these individuals, these parties to agree to participate, and you have to give them dates, and you have to give them places, you have to give them formats. A reassurance that, you know, they're not gonna come in, they're gonna get attacked or something, but it's more like a learning, um, uh. Learning forum, if you will. And that could kick it off, and then we could, we could sort of bifurcate the path and and then concentrate first on Northwest Thirty-Six. And then. Maybe, you know, we move it forward a few months and then, you know, kind of shift gears and and focus on on the other one while still working. Uh on the Northwest Thirty-Six, I just wanna make sure that we have the bandwidth to deal with your E A R based amendments. And these two projects with their processes. And the day to day and all the things that we kind of keep flagging in your code, some of which. As much as we want to do this holistically, are inevitably going to emerge, and Heidi, I'm sure you're going to agree with me. Inevitably are going to emerge as little emergencies that we have to take care of before others, like swimming. Um, so um just wanna uh reiterate that we need to. Um, so be be realistic about, you know, how much we actually can accomplish, I don't want us to. Um, be spread so thin that we can't really give you what you want.
Do you feel that, um. I don't know, we've thrown a lot at you and you've given us a lot of information, greatly appreciate that. Do you feel that, um. If, say, we ask you to, with the information that we've heard and everything that you come back in in January. And tell us, you know, that you kind of digest all this and tell us what you think might be a, you know, let's go this, this and this. That I think that'll give us all of, I really don't feel comfortable right now saying we're gonna go with Northwest Thirty-Six Street or. Or um Abraham Track picking one over the other, because I might sometimes digest all this too. So how about that for our January meeting that we, um and thank you, Councilman, for bringing this up. Um, it it is, you know, very timely and it's very timely with. The other information that we've had at the meeting with, you know, Dr. Murray and and with F dot, it all. We're talking about exactly um the same thing, just connecting the dots. So.
Comfortable with that, let's do that, that'll give us, and if we have more questions, well, first of all, does anyone else have more questions right now?
One quick question, when you were talking about, until the Miami Hotel. The Miami Realtors International Center.
Yes, Global.
Global, it's it's that and on the Burden's Lot. And I don't know if J C or ten would have information on this, but so um within this past year, uh there was information out there. That Office Max building was up for sale, is that still in the? In the, yeah, because that's an interesting part.
It's unclear, we we did, we did uh wield uh some inquiries about it, uh but we haven't heard for a while. And I don't think that what we heard uh of interest was really, um. Synergistic with what you want, I mean, it was more like, oh, let's let's split it up into a bunch of little spaces inside like a market or something and. I was like, no, maybe that's not what it is, but they they, I mean, we told them what they could do even in that context, and I. They went away and we haven't heard anything for a couple of months, so. Um, the thing is that, again, you know, I I keep throwing this 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 term out, and I don't wanna be too repetitive, but you know, synergy. If you start getting one, two, three developments, other people are looking at this order as, okay, things are happening here, and now I feel comfortable investing there. So from that perspective, I do, you know, agree with Councilman ahead. That we 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 need to get a a head for, ahead of that, right, happening, because if these opportunities are coming, we wanna be ready for them. Now, it is true, the other opportunity is also there, we need to be ready for it, but perhaps there is a little bit more time. So, um.
I have a question, um. Because some of, in in either one of these uh uh districts. Uh depending on what we decide we wanna do, uh it it could require. Uh a ballot measure because there's there's a charter provision. Um, wait, and and I get it, and I'm I'm just trying. There there's a lot of ifs in in this, right, but you know, there there are probably certain times, I'm assuming. Where the the timing of this, I mean, has to go on the ballot. You know, and and again, I'm I'm thinking, but like. One, just one of the recommendations of the task force was something that would have required, you know, a charter.
Yes.
Is that, which means, and I get it, you're saying this could be six, it could be seven, it could be eight, it could be nine months. And then I'm assuming that if there's gonna be a charter amendment, that's even puts even more pressure on on community. Uh engagement, because you gotta, you gotta try to convince people.
We need to take the measure.
Right, uh so, I, what what are the, you know, we have elections in April, then again, what in November? Barring any special elections, but. Right, now there is.
Right, so you don't have your, you have a.
November election next November.
In November, okay.
So you could add an item to that election, um, a charter amendment.
I guess. For the.
And and I already have one charter amendment that I was emailing the clerk about, um, just on on notice issues uh that we have to deal with because of the. The Daily Business Review is no longer publishing a a print copy, so he has to do it back.
Yeah.
Um, so you have the November election, you can certainly wait until your April election, you can have standalone election.
Yeah, but we don't want that.
Heidi, well, that'd be in August, is the county having elections, the primary is in the county, I have the, and is that there?
Yes, it's right, yeah, see, there, so they may be also.
Yeah. Depending on when we need to do something already, maybe in August. Usually when the presidential ballot is ahead of your ballot, and so it, we need to ask the. Those supervisor of election for all permission to.
There are maybe two opportunities.
Right, standalone, yeah.
And to be very close track with that.
If if there's enough interest and and with the economic development that you would anticipate. Getting, it may be worth having a standalone election and having that cost, I don't know. Um, but those are, you know, you have different options, you can do standalone election, you can do a mail ballot, you can piggyback onto a primary, you can piggyback onto the presidential November. You can wait until April twenty twenty five, um, I I suspect that you don't wanna do that last option.
Right.
Um, if you want to get this on the ballot for next November, I will tell you that the supervisor of elections deadline is July twenty sixth, I believe. Um, so I'm currently underway on charter review process elsewhere, and that is the deadline countywide. Um, it's not city by city deadline, so if you have a charter.
So that's that's eight months right there.
Yes, yes, I I think that not even, it's yeah, six months just to.
Yeah.
Figure out what your ballot language is gonna look like and adopt the resolution and send it over to the county, if you wanna be on the November.
Sure, I think that, why even try to shirkate this, shirkate this thing? Multi-family is the big issue we're talking about in the charter. Because the limitation of three stories, it's not feasible, doesn't make any sense, so. Need to get this valid, this charter amendment sooner than later, because right now, you just mentioned two projects that are going on. They don't need any changes from each other, they're doing it according to our zone.
Yeah.
We're talking about redeveloping the area, with retail, retail's gonna need some multifamily component, just they go together.
They need ropes, yeah.
They need it, right, so to us. This will now, then we start directing, right, to 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 do this charter, what day we're gonna pick this uh vote, but I mean, yeah, like.
Let me, let me remind you, if I, as I go through the stuff from the task force, like they're, they did a survey, and it's not like. Let me remind you that that we may have one opinion, but there's a lot of people that are, you know, uh they're anti-density, anti.
Well, that's why if a Wyndham, that would be ideal for the density, and then there's a multiple, there's a opportunity.
But that that may require, that may require a ballot measure also.
Yes, which it 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 probably will, because we're gonna change the zoning and planning and and other aspects of that area, but, um.
If the point you're making is that you may get less resistance over there.
Correct.
Right, I I understand that.
Because we're detached.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just saying, he was like, well, you know, let's just start drawing up the ballot language.
Well, you're thinking the multi-family is not talking about density.
I think part of.
They start writing densities where the, when the uh engagement of the community is gonna come into play. Multi-family has, I mean, the 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 stories, the.
If you're allowing more stories.
Yeah, but you're already.
I get it, guys, I just wanna get things done.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna cross finish lines, I'm 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 down with either one, I I could count, it seems certainly like there were more people. That wanted to go with Abraham Track uh first, but I mean, it is what it is, I mean.
I think what we're saying is. And Sylvia, and I feel that way too, is Northwest Thirty-Six Street, there's a few things happening there that are big projects. So that in itself is probably gonna be a domino effect, hopefully, you know, for good things too, there's something happening here, it hasn't happened in a long, long time. But it's happening, you know, it's happening, you know.
And with these processes, I think, you know, sort of showing all these other things that are happening, we can sort of kick that domino. Uh to um to really gain momentum, you know, uh it it is, it is happening, but the question is, I know in your mind is. Is it hotel or is it multifamily there too?
I mean, that's just one aspect of it, right?
I realize that, that's just one of the things that 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 has been sort of discussed, and so, you know, that is a question that may come up. You know, what is the right use for that quarter? Um, and I know that that there's been sort of, you know, shifts back and forth as to, well, is it this or is it that, so you know, we would probably have to. Go through the process of asking that question, you know, what what do you think it is, but that's the reason why I wanna back. These conversations with data, right? To, because if people tell us, well, we want to have, you know, office buildings, and the market tell us, you know, we're saturated, you know, we're saturated in our region, and office is just not. Realistic, then there's no point in us having a whole code built around the idea that we're going to incentivize office, right? So, um, we do want to make sure that whatever conversation we have is backed by factual data. And whether that comes from uh the studies and the initiatives that are going on already with the airport, with the with the stadium. You know, anything else that is happening that is going to impact us, or our own. Um, studies that we do, whether, you know, it is, uh whether we draw. Dr. Murray in to help us or someone else, we bring along quite a power little team. Um, that it'll be, you know, uh on a foundation of.
Then I guess, something else, and Sylvia, you may know more about this, is, um, we should keep in mind, there's a state bill right now, but is it one oh two?
State bills.
Which is um being proposed, which may impact us because my understanding of it, and of course, it hasn't been finalized, is that, um.
No, it's done.
It's finalized. It's finalized, oh, okay, so what?
Oh, yes, yeah.
That is impacting us, can impact us, because basically our regulations.
It could impact you, um.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, we we actually need to do a little bit of an analysis as to how it would impact, it could impact you now. Uh we have to do an inventory of the lands that are owned by the city, put it on the website and, you know, we do an analysis of zoning districts where that might be. You know, a factor. But in the consideration of how we change these districts, I think that we need to take that also into consideration. Because if we were to raise the building tax, if we were to raise uh the density, then that could become, is that is that correct? Could become the standard for uh mid local project, um.
Yes.
Within a mile.
Like that.
My understanding is that then the developer and.
Correct.
Well, essentially, and just, you know, developer could come in and.
There are certain districts, it's it's not anywhere, right? So your single-family residential districts, your multifamily residential districts are are safe from that. I feel well, but your um your commercial districts, uh you don't have anything industrial per se, so not that. But your commercial districts and anything that is mixed use uh would be um would be fair game, really, you know. So to the chair.
In this case, I say we run. Because that's where we don't want the density. If we wait for these.
I'm sorry, councilwoman, I didn't hear you. You moved away from the mic.
In this case, I completely forgot about the bill. That's a game changer, because we're trying to avoid. High-impact density, right? Because that's what that bill calls for, correct?
Um well, basically, what it does is that it gives a developer the ability to bring a project in as of right. Using the highest density that is allowed in the city.
Hmm.
And the highest height that is located within one mile of the building within within the city limits. So so you don't have any really tall buildings, you know, like super tall, and your density right now, your maximum is twenty units per acre. So that 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 doesn't really give um.
Doesn't have the impact.
It doesn't really have the attractiveness.
But thirty-sixth street is vulnerable, because commercial.
But the density is still twenty units per.
Over at the density and height in that area, so.
Yeah.
They could grab the height from any hotel there, which is twelve. I think there's some, there's one of them, it's like ten stories, right? So the height can be taken.
The ha- the ha- yeah, the highest, the highest height within that.
Yeah.
This one mile.
Ten.
Uh radius, if it is ten, then they could go up to ten stories. And if twenty is the highest density that the city permits, they could go for that.
That's all it could be.
And 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 bring the project as of right.
But I know there's a lot of cities that are, this is obviously a major concern to all municipalities. A lot of them are working on seeing how they can, his density, when it's clearly defined, definitely leaves you vulnerable. But there's ways of designing the zoning with bonuses and certain things that you do, because certain things that necessarily they can't grab.
Um.
They're working on it now, so I don't like from other municipalities, but.
Yeah, but I'm 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 entirely sure that it's clear, but you know, I think, yeah.
I think. Difficult.
I think that this is a a much broader conversation.
Yeah.
It is going to be a factor. It's another thing for us now to come on, you know, it it.
You know, discussion, we're discussing all this.
I haven't forgotten about that, believe me. I know that if we were to have a conversation about the Abraham track. And we say, well, we could pack our density there, you know, if if we want to make it attractive, should we raise the density, right, for a developer? That we need to keep in mind that that could have an impact on other parts of the city as well. So we need to balance those interests out, so it is is on my mind.
But it still doesn't solve the issue of your gateway on thirty-sixth.
Right.
So should we incorporate the change now and do as Councilman Fred had said in target thirty-sixth street to start putting limitations and uses? For the vision that it is that we want to see there?
I mean, there's.
I mean, she's gonna take six months, I'm concerned. Yeah, we have been stated Abraham, which is easier. But then i- if if we focus on over there, they're gonna start, we're not stopping the bleed that we've been trying to. Let's put it on the agenda for January. We have an early meeting in January. It's January eighth, because it's so it's right after the holidays.
Six months. Oh, yeah.
Yes. Um I think we've had a lot of discussion, um. And we need to look further to the state, you know, you know, and all this, so let's wait till January, have this on the agenda, please. Erica.
We'll bring you a plan of action.
And that way. We'll be making more informed. I find sometimes when we're doing all this, it's not a good time to make a a decision. We need to to let things break later. All right, um.
Thank you.
Sylvia, thank you so you and Alex, both of you, um have just your professionalism, your guidance, your expertise, very greatly valued.
It's exciting times.
And and I know you're excited about our city too, and that shows that you see it as there's a lot of opportunity here to.
Yeah, we're we're excited to be part of your project.
It is. Great, thank you so much.
Yes.
Good heart. Okay, so we move to the next agenda item, right, Councilman Fred.
So after a complicated study, a complicated conversation like that, let's talk about something. Everybody's doing crazy, right, or a hint? That's everybody's on the same page about parking in this city. Um but the reason I'm bringing this up is, uh and I hate to bring up a a a conversation that can go in a lot of different directions. But there uh.
Thank you, Heidi.
For as long as I've been up here, there's been a debate about whether or not there's a parking problem or not. Obviously, if there's a debate, I guess it's debatable. Um I refer back again to the task force. The half of the report was about recommendations. We didn't even get to it when we were at the Cedar Center. We only got halfway through. We said, we'll talk about parking later. Um and since we've got the Springs Town Center. Knock on wood soon to be uh up and running. I I have said numerous times, uh it. There there's a scenario when it comes to parking where, oh, we don't have a parking problem, because we have a bunch of empty storefronts and 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 the Springs Town Center is at like half capacity. But that's probably not gonna happen. So whether we have a parking problem or not, we're not. I I think I I want a parking problem, right? If we don't have a parking problem, when that comes online, then we did something really wrong. So we should operate and look ahead to and and prepare to solve a parking problem. And the big part of that was the parking study. And so I'll I'll I will uh hand it over to staff to discuss the parking study.
Well, long story short, we get the draft on December fifteen.
Cool.
Um after that, I the mayor and I were speaking recently about about it. She she suggested a workshop specifically about it. It's a great idea. Workshop, discuss it, amend it, and we'll have the.
And and I just want to let we all see the draft before we get the final, or present in the final, if we're gonna see the draft. It's gonna be Blair here. We wanna address on the draft, so.
And and that's what the workshop is for. You, the the consultant will be here, we can talk to consultant, make edits, changes.
Hopefully in January, we can.
Yeah.
Because that.
And then once once you get those, they'll they will go back, make the modifications, submit to you the final report.
One thing I I did ask um Tammy about a month ago, is we have hardly any signs, I think, one or two. On all along Canal Street right now, all the way along, um of where the parking is, and at least for right now. We should have signs saying what it is, because if tomorrow people start parking there all the time, I don't, I'm not, I don't even know what it's supposed to be, it turned out. We've looked into it, and it should be um eight to five, two-hour parking from eight to five, is that correct, Tammy, right now, is what applies to Canal Street?
It was uh seven to seven.
Or seven to, but two-hour parking between, similar to Westward.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, but it's. Only in the over overlay, so it stops kind of like, um it doesn't go along all of Canal.
Correct.
So remember you have, um. It kind of stops on where we would call the overlay district, so. Right in front of Cracker.
It's in front of the UBS store directly with a sign, and then as you had asked, we are putting up new signs to be consistent.
Whatever that's called. Right, correct.
So things. Right. And I don't mean tons of signs, just enough so that someone has an idea, and we do, and the police do, of, you know, what applies right now. And knowing that that'll likely change. Um if we put the regular signs, you know, underneath, we can make any adjustments and no overnight parking or whatever. But um so. We have it in the works. It's just we, they needed to finish some of the grassing, the parking and stuff. And then we're there, we'll address with the parking study and all, but at least we should all know right now what applies to that area. We can start parking there tomorrow.
I think a parking workshop in January would be fantastic, so that we can start thinking about that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. Excuse me, Heidi, these cookies are really good. Thank you. Twelve D, request by Councilman Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I uh I have to bring this point to the agenda. I spoke to uh J C about it and so forth. You all remember about three or four weeks ago, we got a lot of rain and a lot of flooding. I got emails, I got calls, I got folks saying things like, you know, you said you were gonna do something about this, and why, how come you finished South Loyola, Louisiana? And this hasn't been done? And I explained to them what projects and what were coming online and what was still working, raised money, so. That's why I wanted us to kind of bring it to the to the floor and bring it to the public, so to speak, to help ameliorate something, because it was awful. I mean, I changed photos when we sent me, yeah, a ton of pictures of of that. And that's when I called the J C. He said, you know, where are we with some of these things? And I asked him, just, you know, to get them on record again, so that people know. That we are working on them, that one project comes on January, and another project is one that we're seeking funding for, if I'm not mistaken, J C or something to that.
That's correct. As you know, the the East and Oakwood uh project, which has drainage included in there. Is uh what has been worked by the council. We have are currently, we're working uh on the contract details right now, analyzing the contract. Uh once we can execute, once we do execute the contract, um so issue notice proceed, pre-construction meeting, get that started, we're hoping to.
Hi, well, we're trying to get that started in January, because last week we met with the C E I Services, which is basically the um. This the consultants that are gonna help the city oversee the Oakwood uh Drive project. Uh they gave us back all of their input on the contract. Uh Heidi already responded to that and said that those are more technical questions. So we're gonna add them to the contract, because we we feel that they they can be added. So once we finalize that C E I service contract, then we're gonna get them on board. We have, um we're gonna try to get them early in January. We've already spoken to them about it and uh and kind of have like a free services meeting with them. So that we can get the uh contractor's uh agreement signed, and we're gonna have a pre-construction meeting in January.
It's just.
Is the timeline.
It's just for my clarification, that twenty minutes to eleven, that project is going to. That project is gonna have, since the drainage. I wanna be I wanna be able to give short answer.
So the the project specific on uh Oakwood Drive.
Yes.
Is going to add a pump station that will also add some drainages on the corner of Stafford Park, right across from the Charter School.
Okay.
To go. That's one component.
Yes.
Which is the storm drain. Then on East Drive, it's gonna make some beautifications. So it's a beautification roadway slash.
Drainage.
Drainage.
Okay.
In addition to that, we also, the legislature this year, we have in in that area, a stormwater project that we're seeking funding for. And that is on Miller.
Oh, correct.
It's on Miller. We're we're gonna be doing a stormwater project. Hopefully it gets funded, uh which I'll be talking about.
So uh remind me, my geography is a little fuzzy right now. Um flooding that happens on forest, on that part of the park, that's one of the houses that I saw. How is that gonna be impacted by project A or the one that's the the stormwater pump?
The forest will, so the flooding that's happening on forest.
Yes.
Will somewhat be alleviated by the project that we're gonna do on Oakwood.
Of course.
Because what's gonna happen is that pump that's going to be installed in Oakwood is going to help, because right now, the way the storm system is set up, it's done by gravity. So if the canals are high, the water's not being pushed out, and with that pump station being put on Oakwood. It's gonna actually pump out the water um out of the transistors faster.
Actually, I stand corrected. The stormwater project that we're looking at funding is for.
For. It's for forest, the the Miller is the is the.
It's a dream, okay, it's the Oakwood, yeah, so.
It's a drain. That's that's a new appropriation request for the year, that's what we have in addition.
The you have, we have a project sympathy for forest at uh in in the state legislature's hands right now, that we're seeking funding for.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Ab- absolutely it is, yes.
Yes.
And I have a question. Didn't we have a stormwater pump uh project completed at some point in the city? Before?
So I think what you're thinking of is the um the Hook Square Pump Station that is going, that's part of pumping out all of the water that happens. And on the circle in that area, out to the uh.
But that that hasn't happened.
No, that's in the works as well.
So we've never had a stormwater pump uh.
No, we did. It's a refurbishment, so we're just replacing it because it's aged.
On the Hook Square, it's just a replacement of that pump station, but to answer your question, yes, we've had some stormwater improvements, just not recently.
On Hook Square.
Okay, I got it.
The most recent project that we've had that was stormwater related was several years ago on Clover.
Okay, correct.
And um I just wanted to say, these instances where we had one this year and I think last year are, you know, these unique weather conditions. Where a storm comes and just sits over not a small area of Dade County, because sometimes, you know, Kendall is receiving center rain, but the rest of us are, and we are somewhere, and the water has a place to go. But it's these um subtle, unique weather conditions where um they sit over the county for hours and and fill the entire county. They're they're very big, and the water, you know, has nowhere to go. It flows in the path of least resistance, and when there's no period to go, it can. But this should help a lot to put the, hopefully, and and with a continued new appropriation. Oh, the other thing, Tammy, if you could explain the delay in the bidding process was, my understanding is because the bids came in too high and you had to go out for bids again, right? Or how did that work? They were not able to advertise, because we, yes, they came over budget, so we had to re-advertise, and uh the second time they came around, they were.
Yeah, and that and that.
And that delayed the whole process of getting started also.
Yes, I I did, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Um. Let's go to uh reports and recommendations. City attorney.
Just fishing on great colonies.
Did you make these cookies?
I did make those cookies.
Oh. Oh.
And I had a high grade.
Tell me.
Two years old.
Up in you, Harry.
I am.
Tell him, tell little Andy thank you for us.
Extra chocolate chips, I'm sure of that.
Yes. City manager?
Uh yes, um wanted to give a couple of updates here. Uh the War Memorial Project, we're waiting for the executed contract from the state. Um and as concurrently, we are working on the R P, which will be advertised uh in January. The outlets on Westward Drive will be completed this week, so we'll start continuing the holiday decorations.
We're looking for the black pools, I saw.
That's where you plug in the the outlets. Um so and lastly, um I know that in years past. When during legislative session, yes, you guys will go up during day days, um mistaken, um I'm used to doing things a little differently. And you guys had an argument, or originally agreed to go earlier. You can go to day days, kind of like their short ones up and stay fresh in their mind, but by the time day days come around, the budget's gone. So get there early and at the beginning of session. So speaking with at the Blue Drive with Senator Albi, I go. So um he mentioned to arrive there, the January fifteenth, Monday, that's a that's a Monday. Not to have any meetings, I think, just to get there, that would be travel day. And then Tuesday, Wednesday have meetings, and then you can come, we can come back um Wednesday evening or Thursday. The bulk of business is done Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, things start slowing down, and Friday is crap.
Is it, is it in January fifteen, one? Is it, is it in January fifteen, one?
That is correct. Uh, it's more than a day. That that would be when you get there. It's to have meetings, to be walking up and down the.
No, 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 sure, when when are the dates for day days?
Day days, it's in.
February.
Is it better? It's like a month later. You're halfway through session. So.
So I.
I'm I'm opening it up, 'cause I'm I'm usually going with one person, a bunch of people. So we'll go over there and you know, walk the hallway, knock on doors, knock people.
And I think, JC, what we can do is, and I know you and I had talked about this, um, we have gone day days, and it has happened several times that, you know, we're there and it's kind of to the end, so I I know. I've given it thought to go early. Um, you know, in the past, and in fact, I think the year before last, I went on my own early, just, and then day days again, because it's easier to get things done when they're still working. So I think this is a good plan for us. Um. But what we probably need is to reach out to our lobbyists to schedule the meetings and see, which means you can schedule them on Tuesday, all on Wednesday. Or Tuesday and Wednesday, and I fly home Wednesday, you know, whatever, so it doesn't have to be, um.
I will, I will do that tomorrow. I will give them a call and get get them rolling on scheduling who we need to meet with. You know, the different committees and all that stuff, so there there's, we have five different projects in in up there, and each of them, I mean, there's a couple of different silos that they come from, so different committees, different committee chairs, there's people that we need to speak to.
And I think that's what's happened in the past when we go on day days too, and we've been very, very lucky, because we've gotten our appropriations, so, um, but, uh, most of them. Uh, is that it's hard to get to the committees and stuff, you know, they're done and there. So we're missing that, up adding that in addition to seeing with our representatives of actually, you know, being with committees.
Just to give you an idea, I'm um, January fifteenth, that's the second week of session. Session starts January eighth. Uh, and I'm sorry, it's, yeah, the second week. Because January eighth is our council meeting, that's what I'm getting. January is the council meeting, that's the first week of session, and then we go.
So I just have a request, because of my condition, getting around a building for two days is gonna be very challenging. I would appreciate any assistance and getting wheelchairs. Up there, I'm not going up there with a wheelchair, I'm just, you know, I I was there, you know, ten, twelve years ago, and obviously I was much younger. But I wanna get around as best as I could.
Absolutely.
Call the grounds.
So if you just let me know who wants to attend.
We can arrange those, yeah. Whereas, I mean, I mean, and if there's anyone else that already knows.
Yeah, no, I'm.
But either way, you're gonna set up the meetings.
I'm gonna be setting up the meetings, so it could be all of us, one of us. Now, I will say that when we're up there, you know, it will take turns going in with me. It'll be one of you and myself. The 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 legislature, they're very specific about not having more than one of you together talking about something that you may be voting on.
Yes.
Very respectful of that, so we can take turns, who's gonna go in this time, and done that before as well. So just keep that in mind.
Leave you, leave the logistics up to you.
I I've I've been up there where they said, okay, one at a time, you know, to be respectful, but in day days, I don't know if they have the magic waiver that they do that.
We even share with DG.
They're not voting on the appropriation. How about?
It surely, usually, doesn't talk.
I think that's the thing, I see, we're not the one to vote.
Yeah, that's true. They're the one voting.
Maybe too, everything's said and done, like, I totally read there, and we said, that's why we're going in. But we're voting in out here.
Anything else?
I don't know, that's all I have, just let me know who wants to go and make it happen.
Um, so we'll start with advice there?
Oh, okay.
Um, so let's see here. I know that we had spoken about, um, the freebie, we were gonna look into the cost for the city for that. I don't know, we can follow up on that later.
We did look into how it's expensive, it would not be covered under, um, our C I T, but I think we already had the show.
Okay, well, maybe for future, when, you know, Abraham track has already developed, we may be able to afford something like that, that we can connect to both. I think in most cities, um, the businesses pay for it. They cover the cost of freebie. You know, we just have to have the concentration, concentration of businesses to spread out the cost in a lot of cities, um, yeah.
Like for advertising.
Right, they advertising and also getting people to and from, you know, so. So it's a potential future.
Actually, the cities have been the ones that have freebie, they're doing a wave of shuttle. They've been using freebie as their, um, on demand service. And so they've been using, they've been just transferring the C I T money instead of using it for shuttle, they didn't use for that.
That's exactly what North Bay Village did in the last, I think, three or four years. They they had a, um, a circulator similar to you guys, and they got rid of that and just went free.
And something that free, that people don't realize, that freebie also does provide a fixed route. Shuttle is just an electric bus. It shouldn't be as big as the one that we have, um, but they do provide that as well.
Right, you said we can't use the C I T.
You can.
We can.
Oh, we can, I understood we couldn't.
We don't, we don't have it.
Uh, that both.
Okay, perfect, um. That was, I was, uh, well, I'll talk to you about that later. Let's see here, the golf course status, we already talked about that. Um, I know the concerns with Whole Nineteen. Uh, I just have a little commentary. I don't think that Whole Nineteen should solely rely on golfer traffic. They are a restaurant. They are a business, so I think that we need, um, in the meantime, because it's rough to improvise how they can create their own traffic, um, major projects, okay, so the golf course tour, I'm available tomorrow, JC, if you wanna take me up on the offer, or I don't know how your schedule is, just I'm free. Just call me, I'd love to see that. Uh, so I'd like, if it's possible, before we open up the golf course again, if we could have a a building infraction done, because I I walked through there myself, and there's certain conditions that I find concerning, maybe public, uh, uh, it could be a public concern. But tomorrow we get together, we can maybe take a uh, I just wanted to see if I could follow up. You don't have to answer now, Heidi. The tree ordinance review status, I know that there's a lot going on, and I know you're working on it, so whenever you can, just give me a a update. And, uh, I just wanna wish everybody uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We we ended with a big binding, I guess, the passport of the year. And, um, that's it. I'm looking forward to to a new year with, uh, good projects.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Councilman Senti?
Um, this past Friday, I was fortunate and thankful that Principal Nelson Gonzalez and Niko Costa partnered, the principal of the day.
Wow.
Oh, nice.
At the Miami Springs High School, did not give them all a first ruler day off. It was tempting. But, uh, the end of the day was kind of a day for, uh, Niko Costa, the rehearsal of his great skills as a teacher. And, uh, so they had all the committee there to look at the work he was doing, obviously the aerospace and the, uh, and, you know, logistics. And, um, I'm fortunate and I'm happy to say that he is the, uh, nominee, not a nominee, he is the appointed center region teacher of the year. So representing Miami Springs, it's a big deal. Uh, he's at a hundred and twenty schools. They selected Niko Costa, and, uh, he's gonna be going against four other possible, uh, uh, nominees to be the teacher of the year for Day County, so. Give him, uh, applaud. And, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and, uh, who knows. Happy holidays.
Councilman, Councilman, go ahead.
Sure, thank you guys all for for the hard work today, and the Titans and Dolphins are tied at thirteen in the fourth quarter, so I'm done.
And Councilman Vasquez?
Um, I have a just a personal announcement, just that, uh, I I want you to be aware of how much we want to be talking about, you know, things of that nature. But, uh, over the last couple of months, I've had some challenges that I've been working with my medical, you know, folks, and, you know, trying to keep things in in perspective and some things that I need to do over the next couple of months, uh, to put me in, uh, in in a better shape. And, uh, so I had missed some opportunities to be helping about, like the, uh, the food, uh, food, uh, drive. That wasn't a day for me, especially the way I was feeling to be there and miss some of the the, uh, you know, some of the events that I've been kind of limiting myself. This got nothing to do with my life. This is this is some health issues that I'm working on. And, um, so I don't always seem to be up in so, you know, challenging my energetic self. But, you know, I have, um, I have my request to, um, to Santa Claus, you know, as well as as Jesus Christ, to, uh, to help me along, uh, over the next few weeks, so just keep me in your prayers, and I'm working on it, and you know, I'm from the Bronx, we're not afraid of anything. First of all, God may be small, so I always had to fight, you know, and this is no different, so. Um, nothing totally serious, but challenging for me, so, um, much appreciated. Um, especially for those of you who have children at home that I grandchildren, I'm gonna be seeing one of my grandchildren, uh, this holiday season, and, um, and it's, uh, you know, this, you know, Happy Hanukkah, and and all the holidays that we celebrate. But I'd just like to remind people that those of us who celebrate Christmas do so because of Jesus Christ. I mean, with all respect to all the other ways and things that folks see in the world, uh, and and their belief systems that people don't believe. Um, and, um, and for all of you, I wish you a most prosperous in the choice in the years. I look forward to seeing you guys, like you, like up here doing the people's business.
Thank you, Councilman. And we all wish you, um, well, and and, you know, that you can count on us. Um, okay, and my understanding, Heidi, you correct me, if we go past eleven, we have to vote Erica to continue meetings. I'm going to be very quick, I'm not gonna take eleven, but I was looking at the time of goal. We'll have to take a vote to continue our meeting. Um, I just wanted to, um, say on, uh, Saturday, this past Saturday was Santa's parade to the gazebo, and it's always such a fun thing. I wanted to thank Commissioner Kevin Cabrera for joining me. We accompanied Santa to the circle, to the gazebo, and, um, and then, uh, you know, it was just lit up, and I mean, hundreds of people there, um, you know, to to enjoy the festivities, the Parks and Recreation Department did an awesome job like they always do, and our Public Works and decorating to circle, um, so everyone had a lot of fun. And, um, it's coming Saturday, the, um, golf cart parade, our city golf cart. Oh, Tammy, we usually announce all this. Well, I just, if you haven't done it, go, bring lawn chairs, either participate with your golf cart or bring lawn chairs and sit out there and watch it go back and forth. It's a lot of fun. It's, um, it's so cool. So, um, and let me let Tammy finish. It was that, there was those, those things, I'm sorry. Okay, and then the other thing is, I just wanted to thank all of you. I know your hearts and soul, your passion, your hard work is, you know, on being on the council, and, um, and all of our, you know, city managers, uh, city clerk, uh, city attorney, our planners that are here, all the meetings, at these long meetings. Um, thank you so much. Thank you to our residents and all of our employees. We're really, really grateful to, um, all of us to be part of this community. I think we're blessed. And with that, I wanna wish everyone very happy holidays. This meeting.